All right, we are live. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wednesday, December 18th, 2024 Litchfield School Board Meeting. It is a holiday spectacular here for the school board meeting. We're all festive tonight. And it is now 5:30. We're going to call the meeting to order and begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are expecting a five-member board this evening. Mr. Schumaker should be joining us, so hopefully he joins us here in the next few minutes. We have review and revisions to tonight's agenda. Any board members have any changes to tonight's agenda?
No.
No? Moving right into consent. Any board members have anything off consent they'd like to talk about tonight? Hearing none. All right, we'll move right into summary of non-public actions from December 4th, 2024. Ms. Ames motioned to approve the November 20th, 2024 meeting minutes. Mr. Plansky seconded the motion. That motion passed 5-0. And that was it for non-public actions from December 4th. And we have no presentations or recognitions this evening. We have no student representatives this evening.
They're en route. They're caroling right now around at the different communities, so they are expected to show up in a little bit, but they knew they were going to be a little bit late because of caroling, so.
Okay, so we'll hold tight on that agenda item and move it to a little bit later this evening. And we'll move it right into community comment on agenda items. We have, this is our first of two community comments tonight, so we'll open it up for any community comment tonight for our agenda items. We're flying right through the agenda tonight, so we're going to close community comment. Again, there's a second community comment a little bit later this evening, and we'll shift gears right into correspondence.
Yes, on December 5th, Ron Oblenas emailed to the board requesting the FY '26 budget files. Mr. Cutter responded and sent them over, and Mr. Oblenas responded with a thank you. On December 6th, Jan Sullivan emailed the board circulating the draft. December 4th, public and non-public minutes. On December 9th, the superintendent sent a text message to the board regarding a confidential personnel issue. On December 10th, the superintendent sent an email to the board with links in one email to all three of the onsite insight reports for GMS, LMS, and CHS. On December 11th, Julie Darling emailed the board circulating the turf tank agreement, as well as sending thank yous for support. On December 12th, Anne Inomoradi circulated a manifest for us to review. On December 13th, Ron Oblenas emailed Dan Mitchell regarding the minutes of the facilities meeting and copied the school board and the budget committee on this email regarding a cost comparison between the Turner report and the onsite insight reports. On December 13th, Renee Burgess sent an email to the board circulating the draft agenda for this evening, and the superintendent responded confirming that draft warrant article language would be added at the beginning of the week. On December 16th, the superintendent emailed the board circulating the draft default budget. On December 17th, Anne Inomoradi circulated the credit card manifest to us. On December 17th, the superintendent sent a text message to the board regarding a medical episode at LMS. On December 17th, the superintendent sent an email to the board circulating the updated draft warrant article language and the updated agenda with links. And on December 18th, Anne Inomoradi emailed the board circulating the payroll and 403B manifests.
All right, excellent. And why don't we start circulating those manifests as well?
Okay.
You take one down your.
We sent them that way.
That's right, that's right. Okay, appreciate the update. And we'll turn it over to Superintendent O'Connell for enrollment.
Yeah, so we have neglected to include this past couple of meetings, just an oversight on my behalf, so make sure we get it back up here on the agenda. I think we last talked about it in October, missed it in November, so just getting it back up here in December. We updated it, both the November numbers and today, as of today, with our enrollment. Stay free to see, pretty consistent, not much changed, so. That's all.
Any questions on enrollment for any of the buildings?
So we're up three since day one.
Total, yeah. I mean, that's going to go up and down a little bit here and there. You know, I know a change that's going to happen when we get back from break, some exiting, and I think we're going to get some coming our way as well, so that's probably going to be around that number, give or take one or two, so.
Okay. All right, moving into warrant articles.
All right, so we put this up on the screen to help people see, but you should have a link there as well. So drafted, draft warrant articles, as we said we would do last meeting, and we can go over them. Our intention is to present tomorrow night, well, not our intention, we will be presenting tomorrow night at the Budget Committee, warrant articles, so just a review of what we have so far. Let me try to make it bigger up here on the screen. All right, so this is a working document here, so we can manipulate it as we kind of talk and go through if need be. Julie has the more official document that she, we didn't want to mess the two things up, so the official one she has separately, but this is so we can kind of just go off of. So the first article will be operating budget one. These two numbers are just started right here because we still need to add the food service and the grants that come in for it, so that number is slightly different when we actually put it on the ballot. We're working on just one clarifying thing, so make sure it's correct. The grant number will be approximately $575,000 for both default and for the proposed budget. And then food service will be roughly the same. There's a slight decrease for the default budget of it due to a couple of benefit and salary-related things. But that, we put these numbers up here because this has been the comparative numbers that we've been using through the budget process. When we finished up with the Budget Committee last week, that's where the $27,359 was. And then going through our default, which is the next agenda item, that 27 million, I think I said 27,000 before, excuse me, 27 million and a little bit over where that is coming from. So traditional first warrant article. Any questions thus far?
So about 280,000, if I do my rough math, between the operating budget and the default for it stands?
Yep, yep. I think food service will make a couple of slight changes to it, so not much, but it will be about 280,000 is the difference. And then when we get to default, I can go into a little bit more detail on some of that. Article two, we were able to come to an agreement with the LSSA, so this is the article related to that. Through our negotiations this fall, three-year contract that we'll be bringing to the voters in March. This is the estimated increases for each of those three years, with this up for the FY '26 year, and increase estimate of about $206,000. Again, pretty straightforward so far.
Okay. And Vice Chair Ames and I had the opportunity to review this with the superintendent yesterday, and we confirmed that this does in fact reconcile to the contract, so no issues there.
I have the TA in my bag if you really want to look at it, but that's where we're at with it. Article three is the one that always follows when you have some sort of CBA-related article, in need of a special meeting in case Article two fails for some reason. And so that's the next one that is right there, pretty straightforward. All right, here's where we get to different type of things. The first three articles are, you know, straightforward, your operating budget with the default, and then some contract negotiations. And then as we go through these next articles, we can talk about sequencing dollar amounts, how we want to tackle them, everything like that. We have two personnel articles on here that are listed as Article four and that are listed as Article five here. We've talked about both of these positions at previous board meetings and previous budget presentations. The first one is a district-wide network administrator. It's bridging two sheets here, that's why you see the big gap there. That's the cost, including salary and benefits for the position, $116,000. We've gone over why this is critical, some of it with this data security, as we look at our networks and we look at some of our friends in districts nearby us and some of the challenges that they've had. We want to make sure our data is secure here in this district. The second one, related to personnel, Article five here on this list, is for a part-time athletic trainer here for the district. We have a contract, just to refresh everyone's memory. They're supposed to be, is going to be at $40,000 in the proposed budget for next year. We are proposing to have our own part-time district-wide athletic trainer. Quick summary, the contract we have is for about approximately 20 hours per week for the athletic trainer that we have. We're positioning this part-time position to work about 30 hours a week, so while there is an increase to this compared to our contract, when you break it down to an hourly basis, we'll be getting better bang for our buck for this. We have made the commitment, we made this at the prior Budget Committee, that if this article passed, we would return that $40,000 at the end of the year, as long as this passes and we get this position. So obviously, we want to continue to do that. So we put the personnel right here after the first three articles. We stood a CBA, went right into personnel. These would have to be raised and appropriated, different from any of the year balances, so we've left them here. We looked back at previous years. This is kind of the sequencing they've been in other years, when you've talked about personnel articles and stuff, so we're trying to mirror that as much as possible. Numbers are accurate, but do you have any questions on these two articles?
We've talked about it quite a bit.
Yep.
We have. I think just the thing to think about is just sequencing of the articles as you start to kind of go through this. Are we okay with it being Article four, Article five? I know Vice Chair Ames and I kind of talked about this yesterday, and we thought the positioning of this made sense, but definitely open to your thoughts as well.
I would agree with this. These are two positions that we really want to try to get filled, so it's better that they further up the list right for funding purposes.
That was the idea.
Yeah.
All right. Article six, we wrote up, and obviously we can have a discussion while we're doing this right now. Article six is what we talked about last time in terms of raising appropriating funds for our capital reserve in regards to maintenance. We talked about making a pretty significant ask of this right here, so this is a $500,000 ask. This would be raised and appropriated. This is not tied to, as written right now, presented to you right now, it is not tied to end-of-the-year funds. It would be separate from that, so it would be go in addition to what we're asking those in the community to raise here. The benefits of this is what we're trying to accomplish is trying to put that money away for these larger projects. You know, we talked last time. GMS is over here, I'm going to leave GMS over here. There's a lot of work being done at Facilities Committee around GMS, but we can't neglect our other buildings, such as CHS, which is 25 years old, it's going to need a roof in the next five years, validated by the onsite insight report. It would be great to start putting this money away, so in five years, we can just pull from our reserve fund to take care of that type of expense, that significant event suspense, don't have to go to expense, don't have to go to bond, don't have to make a significant ask at that time to do it. If this was to be successful, this article, this would be, I would recommend making this a recurring article every year for the budget. So while there'd be a tax impact in year one, that tax impact would go away in the following years, as long as you put a consistent dollar amount in this article. Now, we talked about different dollar amounts. It feels like from our board conversation last week, we settled on 500,000. Obviously, this is the presentation we can more or less, or feel this is the right spot to start, and obviously meeting with Budget Committee tomorrow as well, but this is where we got right now. And again, we haven't done this from end-of-the-year funds, this would be raised and appropriated separate from that.
I mean, we talked about the need for it. There's definitely a need for it. I think with the roof likely to cost close to that amount, I think it's a good idea to start kind of sucking away money for it now in an agreement. It's a large sum for a warrant article to be raised and appropriated, so we'll, you know, have to see how the voters react to it.
I mean, we've talked about, we get slammed sometimes for not having money set aside for some of these projects. This is our opportunity to put away some significant money.
I agree. Is it enough?
Yeah.
It's probably not entirely, but I don't think we can ask for more on this particular year.
I think you're targeting, obviously, a lot can change over the course of years, right? I think what you're targeting is five years from now, the roof at CHS. And I'm speaking of it separate from GMS, because I think GMS is a different conversation. Priority is GMS, and I'm not debating that. We can't forget CHS. So if you think about the roof as the first significant project that needs to be done there, and when we say roof, we say other things that would need to occur if we're tearing off the roof anyways. And we look at the onsite insight report, I'm doing this from memory, I apologize, but I think it's about $2.1 million. So you have about 3% increase over the next five years, you know, exponentially there. We put $500,000 away for five years, you're going to get close to that $2.5 million amount that that's going to cost at that time. You're literally taking out and paying for it. So five years from now, all goes to plan. Of course, everything always goes as planned, but goes as planned. You have this article sitting here five years from now, the next article is taking it out and paying for a new roof at CHS. That's the idea. And then the impact of that is nothing for your taxpayers, because you're putting the money away in time. It's like your savings account, so. Now, whether it's more, I mean, this is, I mean, you know, I spoke with my other district. I remember when that board first proposed a similar article, they came in with an $800,000 ask, and then the selectmen came in and bumped it up to a million, you know, or Budget Committee, one of the groups outside, a different group came in and put more money on it. So, you know, you can definitely look at putting more money in. That is something that that community valued and could do at that time. Every community is different in terms of where they are from a financial standpoint, but I think the 500 is a nice number with the target of the work at CHS five years from now, a specific target that you're going after.
Okay. I have some additional comments, but maybe we come back to this at the end.
Sure. So we split, put this article in Article six because you're raising appropriating it away from end-of-the-year funds. So the next bunch of articles are going to be connected to the utilization of our end-of-the-year funds, so that's why we moved this article up higher in the list here. And the sequencing of these next set of articles are probably in level of importance to kind of go through. First is the benefits from, to put into the benefits reserve fund. For people who remember, this was a really high number this past year. It was like 178,000. And you put that away because you had six different people who had put in for retirement over the course of the past two years, so you need to put that significant money away. This year, we had no new people put in for retirement. We had some people who are still with us, and they're great, and said they might, they're thinking about it again, but we don't need to re-put that huge initial significant away for them because we already did that. So this is just the money because they stayed the kind of additional year here, in the event that they stay again next year. It's a very small amount, this would come out of end-of-the-year funds into that reserve fund. We did a whole bunch of conversation about it way back in July or August about how that comes in and out, if anyone's walking, watching at home and wants to go back and watch and watch that. I think they had a forum connected to it and stuff, but that's the exact dollar amount. It's pretty straightforward. All right, Article eight is solar payoff. We've talked about this at the board level a bunch of different times, to start putting money away for the option to pay off for the solar panels six years from now, or at the end of the six-year agreement, whenever that officially kicks off. We would hope that we start utilizing the solar as early as January here. Julie's going to provide an update about that a little bit later. So that six-year window would be starting relatively soon, so we should, we could start putting money away from it right now with the same idea. We don't have to ask the entire dollar amount from the taxpayers down the road, because we've been saving it for it in advance. If for some reason you wanted to not buy the solar panels, you would have this money sitting in your capital reserve. You'd have to do some moving of it and voting in different warrant articles and stuff, but you could do some different things with it down the road. We use that $100,000 number because we're projecting out six years. It's going to be about $600,000 is what the contract is for it, so that's where the $100,000 starts. If we were not to go for this next year, I think that, or for this current year, for March of '25, we'd probably look at a similar warrant article next year with a higher dollar amount, because we'd still be trying to get to that end game of $600,000 when that six-year agreement is over, so.
So would this be a new trust fund?
Yes, so this is, part of this article is to establish the trust fund and then take the money to put in the trust fund.
And if we didn't do it, we didn't do the payoff, we would return that money, or that?
You would have to make decisions as a board, right? Like, if you elected, you could just let it sit for whatever reason. It would be specific for use related to solar payoff, so that it would just sit, because you wouldn't be paying off any solar. You could then, down the road, do a warrant article to close that reserve fund, another warrant article then to transfer that money to whatever you want to do, whether it be a return to the taxpayer, to a different trust fund, reserve fund, whatever the case may be. You can take those different steps down the road. As intended, we would set this up specifically for the responsibility of paying off the solar six years from now. Now, you're not bound by that, but you just have to take other steps if that's what you're not going to do with it down the road.
We've been talking about this for a while, and I think this makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. We elected to do this out of end-of-the-year funds rather than as a standalone warrant article like the 500,000, because this is important, and I think we can do it to minimize that kind of tax impact for people, especially with some of the other asks earlier.
I think we just have to really do a good job in the information guide on what this actually means, right? Because I think that people may just assume, well, I don't even agree with the solar panels, why would I want to pay for them? And they need to understand what happens at the end, right? I think our options are either to pay for them, have the price go skyrocket, or to tear them off the roof, would be my understanding.
We're going to pay for it either way. This way saves us money.
And we have the table from the original contract that shows the significant price increases that we'll be on the hook to pay, so.
Okay, Article nine?
Article nine, again, bridging a couple of papers here. This is a raise and appropriate the $200,000 for Special Education Capital Reserve Fund. This was the dollar amount we put in right now for this discussion. You know, last time we met, we talked about we will likely have some sort of need to utilize the trust fund this year at some point. And we discussed whether we want to take all of the money out of it, you know, in this current fiscal year, to cover anything that is, wait until we see exactly how much we want to take out as the year gets more closer to the end of it, and whatever, wherever we're at in that process. We put 200 here because that's kind of the number we want to end up with our capital reserve fund. So just give you a couple of hypotheticals here. Say there's about 160,000 that's in the account right now. If we were to take all of that out of the reserve account right now, and then like as a just-in-case we need it or something, and we didn't, and we say we only used 20,000 of it, right? That 140,000 that we didn't use, because we're using end-of-the-year funds for this 200,000, that 140 would go towards this. So we're just kind of putting it back into the reserve fund, if that makes sense.
At what point will we be able to tell the voters how much that is?
It depends on how you want to do taking and leaving of that account, right? This is kind of the risk-reward of these type of things, right? Like, if we, and that's the option if we were to take everything out at one time, right? If we were to wait till, say, May to the closer to the end of the year, we would obviously have more data at our hands to know exactly how much money. It could be a dollar we need to take out, it could be 20,000 we need to take out, it could be 100,000 we need to take out, right? Dynamics change left and right when it comes to special education. We're on a good course right now, we feel good about it, right? We do anticipate, because we had that move in right at the beginning of the year, needing to access a little bit of this, right? But as the year kind of goes on, there'll be different dynamics that kind of float out. The idea of taking it all out now is just so like you have it, right? And then as you raise and appropriate this, you're being transparent on what you want the dollar amount for the account to end up as, right? In another, like, swing of it, we have about 160 in it right now, right? This warrant article could be 40,000, right? You have 160 in it right now. You put a warrant article out for 40,000. That's a nice round number of 200,000. That's the goal for the account. But if we're dipping into that 160 right there, we're not going to end up with that 200 at the end of the year. If we dipped into that 160 for, say, 20,000, and this passed with a $40,000 number there, we're only going to end up with 180 when it's all said and done there. So this is kind of like, this is the challenge of this, putting something on like this. Now, the important language is here is to raise and appropriate up to a sum of $200,000. You're not committing to pulling $200,000 out of your end-of-the-year funds, right? One, you may not have $200,000 to pull out from your end-of-the-year funds, right? Because you're going to do these articles in sequence. You're going to do that benefits one first, take care of that money. You're going to go to solar panel next to take care of that money, and then you're going to slide down to this next article to take care of that. So at the time, at the end of the year, when we have a discussion about this, say we didn't touch the 160, we may only raise and appropriate 40, which this allows us to do, because it's up to a sum of 200,000.
Do we feel good that 200 is the ultimate goal number for this account? I mean, we've talked about one student can cost us, can cost us up to that much.
Yeah, I mean, a single student can cost you over $200,000. A single student, rare, granted, very rare, can cost you a half million dollars, right? Like, I think 200 is a place to start, because we don't have 200 right now, right? And I think once you can get to that 200, you can put some more incremental numbers in future years that are connected to that, right? I think it'd be a good article to add a little bit to every single year, right? Get into a rhythm of putting some money. It doesn't have to be extraordinary, extraordinary amount of money in it. If you had a given year where you had to access it, that might be a year you up the amount of money that you're putting into this type of warrant article. But I think a 200 starting point is a good place to start. I know some districts, again, size of districts are different, like to have millions in here. You know, you've seen some districts that are utilizing this to cover the lack of special ed funding they've receiving from the state, right, that they were counting on. We're fortunate, where it's only really 50,000 that we kind of are short with from the state funding. There are districts that are millions short, right, and they have to access this fund to kind of get to that. There are their funds to do it. So I don't think, like, I think 200 is a good start place, but it shouldn't be the end place when you talk about what's in the account.
When was the last time we dipped into this fund?
Before my time.
Yeah.
So we've, in the past, we've just used end-of-the-year funds to cover any shortfall if there was?
Yes.
But for the most part, we've had underspend.
Yes.
In special ed.
Yeah.
Particularly since COVID.
This year will definitely be tighter, and we're going to need to draw from that account, for sure.
So should we make a decision to draw some amount out prior to election day?
Yes, we're definitely going to need to, and that's why I think we need to take the proactive stance and have this article. So in March, we're already thinking about the next year in having that account replenished.
In any event, we had to use everything, we would still have, this 200,000 could go in, we'd be ready to finish it. If we don't do this, there'll be nothing next year.
That's why order matters, right? Because we're funding all the way up to Article eight first, and then up to, and then if.
If available.
If available, Article nine, up to 200, if there's money left, right?
I do think this is the right order. I think you got to start putting away for solar. You know, like, solar's above this, and I think you got to get that off the ground. And we'll talk about 10 here in a second, but I think the special ed should be above 10, which is going to be a capitals improvement one. So we can talk about dollar amount there, but just to kind of bring in Article 10 into the conversation, this is the final one we have here. This is the exact article that you did, essentially the exact article you did this past year, raise and appropriate sum of up to $125,000 put in capital improvements expenditure fund. Same dollar amount from March of this previous year, same thing you're going to utilize, the way that this is written, to utilize your end-of-the-year fund balance to do this. And it's the same way, it's up to $125,000 is what you can put in there. And again, this could approve, this, like, say hypothetically, all 10 articles were, we went with all 10 of these articles, exactly as written, everything got approved. We could get to the end of the year and not have the end of the year, even though this got approved, not have the end-of-the-year funds to put any money into this reserve, because we're prioritizing the other, the other funds there before we get to this one, so. And I hope from our own financial management that we're not going to be returning, you know, the 1.5 million that got returned this year. We don't have a land issue or anything like that, so I think it'll be a little different end of the year.
So jumping back to Article six for a moment, putting that one back into the discussion, right, this is a raise and appropriate article, as the superintendent mentioned. I guess my thought here is, should there be money left after all of this in our underspend? Do we consider an Article 11 that also allows us to transfer into the building and maintenance fund from unassigned fund balance in addition to?
Should this one fail?
Or in addition to?
Right, I think if you don't have it on there and it doesn't pass, then you can't put anything into it.
Correct.
So it's a safety net.
I mean, just a thought, as we were presenting, I know we didn't talk about it yesterday, but as we're presenting it, like, does it make sense, should there be additional monies left? And I don't know if there is, but should there be additional monies left? Does that give us some protection to transfer more money?
Now, I'm new, I just question, just, you're actually more veteran at warrant articles than I may be, as more longstanding board members. Can we have two articles that would fund the same reserve fund? We have to check with legal on that. I understand that mechanisms, right? One is a raise and appropriate, and one is the use of end-of-the-year funds.
I think they have to be separate.
I think they have to be separate.
I think we can.
Yeah, I think we can do it.
I think it makes sense. I just would want to check with legal on that, you know, just to make sure. And then what would be the dollar amount we would want in that hypothetical Article 11 here?
Well, it's traditionally been like 125,000.
I would follow the same language as Article 10, up to a sum of 125,000.
That's been a standing warrant article forever.
That's what you did last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've been doing it for several years.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I like that approach. You kind of have that safety net, so at least you're putting something into it, right?
I think it just has to be explained well that one is for the, sort of, more of a rainy day thing, and two is the traditional. Certainly much better than I just explained it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, we really have to get the messaging out about what the long-term. Yeah, I mean, I think it, we really have to get the messaging out about what the long-term goal is. Like, this is a major shift in how things have been done, and I think it's a very positive shift. But people are gonna look at this and say, what are you up to? What do you need all this money for?
Well, the other ideas, and what I just heard, my takeaway from the superintendent's comment is, all right, five years, we have a roof in CHS that's gonna cost somewhere, and HVAC is gonna cost somewhere around two and a half. Well, guess what? That drains every penny that I just put into that account, and then I have nothing.
Yeah.
And then what?
Yeah.
I still have other needs.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we're also looking at extensive needs at the obvious GMS.
Yeah, and I feel like this is this delicate balance. Like, I, I'm using CHS as the example because you're in the natural building life for that building, right? Like, you're at the 25-year mark, roofs have a 25 to 30-year lifespan, right? This is the natural, this is the pattern you should be into, right? GMS is not in that pattern, right? Like, GMS is, has been different things, right? Like, different, there's been a lot of discussion on what's the long-term solution to be there. The priority of your buildings is still GMS. Like, I don't want to minimize that. Like, I don't, there might be elementary school, I don't know if there are any here, but, um, I don't want them freaking out, oh my gosh, we're gonna get overlooked. No, no, that's not, not what I'm saying. But you can't, while you're working on a GMS solution, you can't neglect CHS at the same time. And this is trying to, to do both things at the same time.
If you do that, you're turning CHS into the, to the next GMS essentially.
Yeah, you, you don't. Yeah, you don't want to do that, you know? And I know it's a huge bite from the apple, you know? I do think this is, I'm newer, but I think this is, you know, the right year. You're gonna have at least an LEA, hopefully, contract on the ballot next year, right? You're hopefully gonna have something GMS related next year on your ballot, right? Whatever that, that idea is, putting money away, a, a new proposal, whatever the case may be, right? So you're gonna have some big ticket items a year from now, right? So if you can get people comfortable with this, like I said, once you do this once, and you have the standing warrant article there, there's a big tax impact on, on the first year, but then it just kind of rolls over in that. And as long as you're keeping the same dollar amount, the impact's zero because you're doing the same thing over and over.
All right, any other questions on warrant articles? Anything missing that the board was expecting for warrant articles? No? Are we okay presenting the warrant articles to the budget committee tomorrow night?
I'll add that Article 11, we'll add that, and, uh, we're just gonna do a slideshow, hope that's okay?
Just like with these. You're gonna check it legal tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna check with legal tomorrow, and, uh, we'll do a slideshow. I mean, the language should work out too, but we need their final stamp on, on the language in here. But, um, the language should be okay as well, so.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
Yep.
All right, default budget.
Okay. We got a lot of numbers. Um, am I gonna go through all this? Uh, summary for default budgets is you take, um, your operating budget from the year before, and then you add any contractual increases that you're bound by. So that's what we did, and you remove one-time expenditures, and that's what we did. Um, so for example, you know, we have an LEA contract that's still in place for next year that has raises for our personnel in it and, and everything. So those raises are accounted for in the default budget. Um, benefits, for example, are more expensive next year. I think it was dental went up 5% and I think, uh, health 12% is what they went up. So you have to account for that. Those are no quantities you have to account for. So we did all the accounting for all this. We finished, followed the same formula. This is Doug's form, Doug Totten's form. Same formula, did it, same process, talked to him on the phone today, being like, still good, right? And, you know, he said, he's like, I'm out there, but it sounds like you're okay. So like, good shape there. Um, and then removing one-time, uh, one-time, um, expenditures. For example, we introduced a new textbook series this year, right? We're not, that's a one-time thing. You're gonna introduce a textbook, um, new textbook series to your district once in a while, once in a blue moon, so you remove that type of expenditure out. Um, another type of thing is we had a big contract last year, multi-year contract for, uh, our firewall system here. You know, we paid that all in one big chunk. You remove that from the default budget because it's not gonna show up again for a few different years. So the long and short of it, you take all of that out. Um, our default is gonna be this number right here, and I'm gonna zoom in a little bit. Is this 27, a little over 27 million dollars? That 28 million, it will be what actually shows up on the ballot because it accounts for food service and accounts for the grant management. But we've been, in terms of trying to, to use the same language that we've been using through the budget process and the numbers that we do to come up with that, that's where that 27, uh, kind of million comes from. Feel free, you have this document, feel free to do it. The next, um, tab here is a bunch of notes, so you can see kind of the math that kind of gets there. Um, I did share that with someone today who said, you made one small mistake, you gotta change something. This document is correct. My note sheet needs one adjustment, so bear with me when I make that tomorrow. But what I want to bring your attention to is this. So propose first of default. This is a little apple versus oranges, um, you know, because, you know, you're doing a default that's based on your previous year and your expenditures that you have committed for that. Um, and your proposed is slightly different. I think the advantage for us in this discussion right now is being all new to the district. We didn't propose any radical changes, so like, our proposed budget is not really that different from the default budget, right? We did make a, uh, reduction in our paraprofessionals, um, from vacant positions that we had. Um, but besides a lot of the supplies and other oriented things, we weren't ma- we weren't proposing any radical, radical changes two months in when we did this. So when you think about what are the difference drivers and things that are not included in the calculation for the default budget, which makes up some of that 280,000, and, uh, I can make this a little bigger up on the TV here for people in the room, um, but you should have the document in front of you. Uh, for example, one of the things, uh, that's not in the default is any non-union salary. So that's not bound by contracts. Um, yes, that includes administration, but it also includes some of our staff who are not union-based, right? We have administrative assistants, um, some of our technology people, tutors, for example. They're not union people, they're not bound by any contractual obligations. So there, if they got a salary increase in the proposed budget, it's not there in the default. Um, a bottom line special ed cut is not gonna be there in the default. We made that proposal, that, that's fine. Um, non-mandated transportation is not calculated into the default budget. From a, from a, from a school perspective, we are only required by state law to transport K through Eights, right? So there's a formula that you use. Um, you can maintain up to what you spent for transportation previously, but that would not cover all of our high school transportation, all of our special ed transportation, um, excuse me, not special ed, CTE transportation, all of our co-curriculars transportation. We would have to make adjustments in how we took care of some of that stuff if we came into a default or shift money around to account for some of that. Um, I won't go through the entire list, but here, those are kind of the big ticket ones. CTE is another one, you know, we saw an increase in tuition in that, but it's not, um, a salary or, or benefit type of thing. So in the default, it reverts back to what the previous number is. If we were to stay that and not move money around, we'd have to not, if we had the same interest in CTE, have to limit students who, who attended and those type of things. So that's the type of, of differences we would, that come from creating the default to the proposed budget and, and some of the estimates are. Now, that doesn't mean we wouldn't do some of the things if we were in the default. Like, we would still provide as much transportation as we could in the default, but we would have to take from other places and transfer money around, um, to cover up that difference there of about 26,000 dollars. So that just gives you an estimate of why there's a difference between the two, um, and, and some of the crafting to get there and stuff.
So back to the war- the first warrant article, that's really gonna be something in the 28 million dollars, right?
Yeah, because we have to add, and you're gonna add this equivalent to both of them, right? But we've been talking through the budget committee with that 27 million, so I want to, for this tonight, utilize the same consistent number as we're presenting because I wanted to get to this, our proposed versus our default and what is like quote-unquote making up the difference of that.
There was this, on the first tab, this cap rate of reserve fund expendable trust. Is that money we moved to bridge a gap on LMS?
Uh, which?
You have 428,000?
No. This 428,000 here, that 756, that's your warrant articles from last year that passed. So they actually go into our operating budget, right? Because they're housing our e-finance system, right? And then we pay it out from there. Like, we had to bring, like, the benefits one in, we had to bring the 178,000 into our budget to then pay out, right? But it's a separate warrant article, so it's not in that general fund right away. And then you got 125 and another 125. Feel free to digest this, um, send any questions along if you have any questions. Uh, we've been working on it and tweaking it and trying to get answers from various people as we've had questions, and we feel good. Now sending off different BAs that we know, so.
All right, any other questions on default budget? Thank you for putting that together. I know it's a lot of work, right? Looking for opportunities to stream like that going into next year?
Yeah, we have some ideas already to make it easier on us and to do that, so. It's the nice thing about having a, hopefully another chance at it next year.
On-site insight.
So just, you know, um, her name's Tina, not this Tina on the board, but different Tina, who did the onsite insight reports, going back and forth with her. Um, she want, we wanted to do a presentation for the board, um, invite the facilities committee to be part of that as well. We're just zeroing in on dates, so, um, if the board could kind of give me some dates that kind of work for them, we could do it at a board meeting, if that's what you want. We can do it on an off week. We could do it over at the high school, maybe say in the library or the auditorium to give more space or something like that, or even over in the fire department, uh, because I know there'll be interest from the facilities committee to attend. Um, just emailing with her, she's got to set up her work schedule to, to, as she goes to different facilities to do this work. Um, so if you can just give me some dates, uh, we'll try and get her in, in as soon as we can, so. I know it was tough with the holidays and everything, but.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna happen until January.
Right.
Yeah, that's, it's not gonna happen before Christmas, but yeah. Yeah, but she'll start reserve, she'll start going to where she does her next set of reviews, so we just want to like, and she is a New Hampshire person, so.
I'd say just find a date, work Renee, right?
Yeah.
Date that you can slide into an agenda.
Okay, sounds good.
And then we'll just adapt the FIC meeting around that, well, because I don't wanna, I don't know that I want to add an extra FIC meeting, but.
Yeah, okay.
We just need a bigger room.
Yeah.
We need a bigger book.
All right. Um, so we heard back from our legal in terms of deliberate date, working with the town on this. Our legal is fully available on February 8th. Um, limited availability on February 1st, essentially no availability the morning of February 1st, unless we want a completely random person who's never worked with any of our stuff from their firm. Uh, I would not advise doing that. Um, we have some limited availability in the afternoon of the 1st, but that's where the town would like to be, um, because that's when their attorney is available, is in the afternoon of the 1st. Uh, so my recommendation for to you, based upon when our, uh, our attorneys are free, and it sounds like we would have our choice of attorneys on the 8th, if we wanted to go on to the 8th, is to go to the 8th. Um, so then I think it would just be to decide, uh, what time we, we want to do, if we want to do, uh, in the morning, you know, 9:00 AM, I think is when you start here.
8:00 at 10:00 AM, right?
Yep.
Yeah, and then we can just lock that in with, with Kim at the town and, and kind of get going. I mean, we've also been dialoguing about it, but just to finalize for everybody. So what time, sorry, I missed the time. 10:00 AM, okay.
That's consistent with past years, right?
I think so. Yeah, I don't think it's not 9:00 AM, it's a 10:00 AM start.
And then that's it? Okay. Uh, the next thing is remote learning day procedures. Um, I, I would like to, um, in big picture, do, uh, you're gonna see a lot of procedure stuff from me just because I, I like this and developing these type of things. Um, I think, you know, talking with the principals, talking, uh, with different, different staff and, and everything. Uh, it'd be nice if we had consistent procedures across our three buildings in the term, in terms of remote learning days, among other things, but we're gonna start with remote learning days right here. I apologize to everyone when I slip up and call it a blizzard bag in my previous life. That was the, the shorthanded term. I hear that's a bad term here, so I apologize if I use blizzard bag.
Depends who you talk to.
Um, but these are remote learning day, uh, procedures. So this is a draft. My hope is to show you this tonight, get your feedback over the next couple of weeks, re-present this on the 6th, whenever our next, that first board meeting ends in January. Knock on wood that we don't have to utilize that between now and then. Um, and for a more formal approval, I've sent this out, um, to various stakeholders as well to kind of get their feedback, um, to each of our unions and stuff and to administrative teams to kind of get some feedback. I think people, for the most part, are on board with this. There's, to summarize real quick, um, it'd be a more asynchronous model across the district, not just specific for individual schools. I still think elementary would use some of that morning meeting type of mentality and check-in type of stuff. But as you got more to the older kids who are a little more self-sufficient, may not have parents at home on a remote day, um, they would be more asynchronous. Um, there's an ability to, to provide work through a Google Classroom or other technology thing, so it's posted in advance. You have to notify people in advance because you're gonna send, um, phone books home with kids, you know, at, at the night before. Uh, make sure people are every, aware of the possibility that is coming. Um, we have to ensure that, um, you're not gonna, you're gonna have enough power. You know, like, if you live in a community that's prone to lose power or it's a storm that's gonna be really heavy, you're not gonna call a remote day for that because you want people, it's that kind of, as I explain to people, the call is actually whether you're gonna do a two-hour delay or if you're gonna have a remote day. Because if it's, if it's, if you're concerned about people being on the roads all day long, you want to keep people at home, right? But the weather's gonna be not knocking out your power or anything like that, so you'll be able to access your, your tools online. When you have a heavy snowstorm, right, where you're gonna lose power or you're gonna have to deal with cleanup all the time or put a ton of effort in that, you're still gonna go with a traditional snow day in that type of capacity. So that's the type of like call you would make, that this isn't replacing traditional snow days. This is that kind of in-between time where you really can't put people on roads yet, but, you know, you don't want to lose the, lose the day of, of learning and stuff like that. Um, this is very close to the model I've used in other districts, um, so I'm, this is, I'm not a genius. I've stolen from the previous two districts I have, and you're looking at it right here, a combination of the two, um, that kind of go along with it. Um, I think the, the big change is around the elementary age is making it more asynchronous and not set schedule. As a parent of an elementary school kid who tried to do a set schedule with my kid, it is a nightmare. I don't know if anyone else has had that experience because they're trying to use my device while I'm trying to do work. I spend the whole time making their, God bless the elementary school teachers trying to manage that on the other ends and the muting and the unmuting and trying to get anything straight on, on all that type of stuff. So this would, uh, kind of adjust some of that, so it's not as much, um, intensity there and actually get more, more learning done because, um, you can do it at kind of your own speed and own time and stuff. So this is the, the procedures and expectations. If you have any feedback, immediate questions, feel free to ask if you have anything. Please send it along my way, um, in preparation for our next meeting, so.
Okay, thank you for that update.
Yep. Um, last thing is just a notification, um, by, by, uh, policy. When we get donations, as we've talked about in the past, we need to notify the board. Over 5,000 needs your approval, less than 5,000, which this is, it's just a notification. Um, so I want to notify you that we graciously, um, got a donation for $500, um, for LMS, um, girls' basketball uniforms. Um, so we're gonna accept that, that donation and put it towards, um, offsetting some of the costs for those uniforms for our girls' team at the middle school. So it's an anonymous donation. It was just dropped off at the middle school. Um, I mean, a couple of people know who it is, but they don't want to be credited publicly with who it is, so.
Thank you to whoever it was.
Thank you, yeah.
That's very generous, and we appreciate the community support.
Yep.
And thank you for all that you do.
All right, I talked a lot. I'm gonna shift it over to Julie now, so.
Uh, so I did, um, update the school board financials, um, and if anyone has any questions, certainly let me know. Everything's pretty straightforward.
Nope, I think the standout is a solar update.
Yes, for sure, for sure.
I didn't get that, huh?
Keep reading.
That's it.
So we did, um, touch base with Kay, uh, to see where we were at. Um, there was a lot of work done, of course, the day after Thanksgiving, but, um, last we discussed, our, the plan was supposed to be that, um, the next step would be testing. Um, apparently there's been a couple of problems that have been encountered. Um, she said that there was a, um, software configuration issue that they're trying to resolve with, um, the supplier of the power tracking equipment that's up on the roof, um, as well as with the safety shut-off equipment, um, that's supplied by KW Management. So she said she is working on a solution with them on that, but that is something that is unfortunately holding up the process at this point, um, of getting to the testing, um, stage. Um, there was another small issue with connecting the school's, um, IT system to the new equipment, um, but that issue has actually been resolved. They've worked through that. So I did tell Kay that we really need to, you know, be kept abreast of all of the developments in this, so that we really have a realistic timeline of when this is gonna be able to flip the switch on here.
I think we need to get back to regularly scheduled check-ins with Kay.
Sure.
That are just, that are calendared, that Kay understands that we're gonna be.
Absolutely.
That Andrew wants to go to, too.
What's up?
I want Andrew to attend those.
I think, oh, absolutely. Andrew can lead those.
I mean, there's a breach contract, and that's what I'm really energized about. I mean, I'm feeling, I'm, I'm.
Several breach contracts at this point.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's, there's, you know, Kay, and it's, it's a contract that Kay wrote. Like, I don't even know how else to sugarcoat that. There was an agreement that Kay put together, timelines that Kay confirmed? Like, there was no pressure from us as a district to any of these timelines, and here we are yet again. So that's, that's my frustration behind all this.
Catcher one, smidgen of related but not related good news, is the issue that they had with, that Chris resolved allows us to solve the issue with the police where they can have access in an emergency situation to, to our camera system. So that was something we've been working on with, with Litchfield PD.
That's great.
And, you know, Chris was able to, to solve that through this, which is gonna allow us to set that up, and if there was ever an emergency, you know, we, we would be able to partner immediately with, with Litchfield PD to, to address that, so.
So is your thought process right now, like, at what point do we start taking action on this?
Legal, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't know what legal action we can take, right?
There's not a time, and we had reached out before, right? And, you know, Diane said at the time, like, they're, a strongly worded letter is where you're at, you know, like.
But I mean, the, the only legal action that we can take, really, that has any financial impact is we're not sending, we're not signing any final agreement that this is operational, and that's going to just to further delay the payoff. Right? I am not agreeing or signing off on anything that says the clock starts now on our six-year payoff.
I think, as you're talking in real time here, one of the things that, well, I'm on the phone with the attorney tomorrow for a couple of different things, is to ask and the re-go over the contract when it comes to the power storage, not a battery power storage, if we can wait until that is in place before the six-year payoff begins. Because I think that would allow us a lot, we do get legitimate savings right now, right? There's significant electrical savings for LMS right now because of the way the contract is worked, right? Like, it's a cap number, and it's continued to be capped until the project is done. What I would like clarity from our attorney, is just saying this out loud now, it came to me, is that we can hold off until that is completely in place before that six-year window starts. So if this takes another, you know, she says she's gonna deliver it to us in, in the spring of this year. Let's say it doesn't, and it's a two years down the road, two springs from now, our six-year clock hasn't done, and it gains us another year of that locked-in pricing, which, you know, they end up being four years behind schedule at that point, well, at least we garnered significant financial savings over those four years, and that's kind of the, the cost of the delay of it, right?
I mean, the original date that we were supposed to go on?
Two years ago.
January of twenty twenty-two.
It's supposed to be before school opened in twenty twenty-two.
I'm just wondering if there's any, if we have any recourse, if there's a way to sort of lean on that recourse to alleviate some of the final costs of this that we're gonna incur.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Knock a couple of years off the lease payment.
I'm not sure.
Well, I also think, like, they're, well, I, I think what you might want to pursue, and again, I'm not an expert in any of this, but they're up there, and you would think it's like a car, right? Like, as soon as you drive off the lot, the, the, yeah, it becomes less valuable. They're sitting on the roof, they're getting sun, whether they're in use or not, there's sun coming down on them, there's rain coming down, and there's gonna be snow coming down on them in a couple of months. You can't tell me that they're gonna be as valuable, you know, now that they're sitting up there as if they were sitting in a box per se, right? Like, so the value of those.
We're getting the value, but with the PPA.
Maybe, but I think maybe those are the thing, yeah, you know.
I think whatever we can do, I mean, at this point, it's like, the, the town is just like.
Well, that's what I.
We, we just relive this every.
I mean, Doug asked me about it, he's like, is like, can I ask you about solar?
I don't think that there's an appreciation from Kay on the reputational damage that the school board has suffered as a result of this commitment and project.
I mean, you're gonna see it, you guys are gonna see it when we get to the FIC survey. Like, it's the top three reasons why people, when we ask them why they think that the school, you know, was voted down, that was one of the top three reasons, it was a very large response.
Yeah.
So.
Well, thank you for your efforts, appreciate the update, and, yeah, the board is continuing to express frustration, so we'll continue.
Nice to get an update on the batteries, if you haven't heard in months.
Yep.
Well, it's, it's, yeah.
There is a transfer on here, does that transfer require board approval?
We took it off, because it's for a grant, so.
Yes, we realized it was a grant-funded position.
All right, thank you for that.
So there was no transfers over five thousand. Couple of other things I just wanted to discuss was, I did hear back from Eastern Propane today. I'm still awaiting the actual contract, but they are prepared to offer us the same rate of a dollar ninety-five a gallon through twenty-twenty-seven. So that's something certainly for us to discuss if we feel comfortable with that. I do anticipate getting the contract by the end of the week. So I'll sure, certainly share that with you when we see that.
That'll be a good update to share with the budget thing tomorrow as well.
Absolutely. One other small thing, so our athletic director has inquired about using a Square payment reader in order to accept credit and debit card payments for sporting events and other school events. There are other school districts in the area that do use this. The former district that we were in, they, they began using it last year. I did ask our IT director, Chris Jamarog, to look into it as far as any privacy issues, and he said that it, there wasn't anything that he was concerned with. So basically, what they would do is, it would just need to be connected to a bank account, we would connect to the student activities account, because that's what the funds would be for. And then there is a standard transaction fee of two-point-six percent plus ten cents, so that's something that we would have to consider if we wanted to increase a fee, you know, depending on what kind of event it is to cover that cost, so that it's not coming out from us.
How would we keep track, if we had multiple devices, how would we keep track of what payments were coming in and to what student activity fund they were allotted to?
Sure. So I was talking with Dwayne Ford from my, our former district, and he said that what they do is sign out the devices, so you know exactly who that's going to, and then it, right, so that we would track that carefully.
I think they only have the one device, too.
Correct.
Right, you can only do it one at a time, right? So it's out for this, yeah, like, for this event, say, say the theater production, right? It's gonna be signed out to performing arts for three days, so you know every, anything coming in in that three-day window is directly for that group, and then can go to that account, so.
But if there also happens to be a sporting event during that weekend?
Yeah, then you can't use it for that one.
You can't use it for that.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I think you would use it for those bigger.
Bigger events.
Bigger events, you know, like if, if, yeah, whatever. Yeah, something like that, just like a lay bake sale, you know, like, even taking the, the theater production, you know, you had groups raising money for, for different things, they would have to, they would have to probably use old-school chuck cash, you know.
Any other updates this evening?
That's all I have.
I appreciate.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you. Any questions for the business administrator?
I have some questions on the manifest, but do we can hold off on that, or do you want to do that now?
Let's, let's go ahead.
One of the questions on the manifest for the credit card, and I guess I'm just inquiring, what is the school policy regarding rings, championship rings? Because we noticed that when we were going through that there was a pretty substantial payment for rings. I think, I assumed it was for football, but looking through the receipts, it's actually from the twenty-twenty-four boys' lacrosse team. And they.
I assumed it was football, too, so.
Yeah, and it added up to more than five thousand dollars for the two payments. So I don't know, it said something about a student activity fee there, so I don't know how it's being reimbursed or how it's being used, but, you know, I don't, I don't recall us.
Maybe it's another scenario where boosters reversing.
Reimburses, yeah.
It is, so that's not coming out of our actual, like, budget or anything like that. It is one of those reimbursement situations that's being paid for with the credit card for the district, and then that account's gonna be reimbursed by an outside group. So that is the scenario, we clarified that, you know, because you, that question came up yesterday. And that is one of those, we talked about, when we talked about manifest providing summary information, so we were working with Ann on a form that we could present at different board meetings that maybe address some, like, what we know in there is being reimbursed through a different account, right? So you have that list ahead of you to, to answer some of these questions right away. I thought when I looked at it, you know, the championship ring, it was for football based upon on the dollar amount. So I'll have to go back and see why it's.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is why the twenty-twenty-four, so that's lacrosse is a spring sport, so is this crossing, and how does that relate?
Yeah, that concerns me a little bit, so we do have to go kind of follow up on that. I know some things, like, student activity account itself can cross over years, because it's not the, the budget itself, but the fact that we're reimbursing an expense from the last fiscal year is something we need to look into, yeah.
So I don't want to hold up all the other credit card manifest payments and whatnot, so how do you suggest we go about that?
We can look into it tomorrow, and then if it was okay with the board to swing by the office, once we can provide an answer.
Let's hold off on signing that, and maybe just send us a note.
Yeah.
Ready, and you have some information.
Yep.
And I'll take your signatures.
Yeah.
Okay. And just for board awareness on manifest, the superintendent and I, and I'm not sure how much you caught in this conversation.
I was coming in and out, I missed the end of it, yeah.
We talked about getting tighter around the student activity accounts.
Yeah.
And getting some better protocols and processes in place, just in general, around the reimbursement process of, of this. So more to come on that, and also on manifest items specifically, there are, it's seeming like there's some manifest items that the board gets emails on, and there's some manifest items that were not. I think just in general, like, if there's manifest items that the board is being asked to sign, we should see them hopefully in advance.
Yeah.
I know Ann does a really great job.
She does.
No discounting that at all, but if there are items that we're expected to sign, it'd be nice to see them in advance, so we can just be prepared on that.
Yep.
And also, I've also asked for, on each meeting going forward, just to read a summary of our manifest items in arrears, right? So for our next meeting, I will read a summary of the manifest items that we've signed for tonight at our next meeting, just to provide transparency as a summary of what we're signing.
Summary in, in terms of?
Accounts payable X.
Okay. I, I don't have any issue at all with the transparency of it, I just am concerned with the time, because, I mean, if there's.
We did, we did something similar in my previous district, where it was a quick summary of the manifests, manifests of blah, 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 blah.
Literally, I'm envisioning a one-minute read.
Okay, I have no issue with that.
We're gonna model what we did in the other district.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, we got a plan.
Yep. Any other questions on manifest?
They never made it down here.
What's that?
They never made it down here, Matt.
You're welcome.
No, Julie put it over there.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Dr. Taylor for a curriculum update this evening.
Okay, so, I'm excited, we have our two January professional learning days, on January second and January third. Lots of great stuff planned for those days. The first day is an LEA day, so worked closely with the LEA and got a plan going where teachers will spend some time in the morning in the building, then go to CHS and do some vertical things, and then have lunch together, and then go back to their buildings and have separate social-emotional learning training from various groups. And then January third is a big district-wide day where we're all gonna be together and doing some focusing on educator wellness, because there's a lot of educator burnout happening, and just figuring out how to take care of ourselves so that we're not trying to pour from an empty cup and help our students, because that's not possible. So I'm excited for those days. Schedules and things went out to teachers last week. Signups for breakout sessions are underway, and I just want to thank Ray Peoples, he is giving us the magic mirror for fun, like, photo opportunities at a low cost, we're just basically paying for the paper. So we really appreciate that, so that we can have some fun photos for Friday, which would be great, I'm looking forward to that. Any questions on? And then, then the last thing I have is course proposals. The Litchfield Curriculum Review Committee has gone through about nineteen proposals, and we, they were great, they were from a variety of different departments.
Should've been here like a minute.
Thank you. So they were from a variety of different departments. We went through extensive conversations, we had a spreadsheet that everybody filled out their thoughts and comments, and we have courses that we would like to bring forward. They're mostly from CHS, there is one literacy course at LMS that was being proposed that the committee felt would be a benefit to the LMS programming. CHS will come on, in a January board meeting to give more updates on what rotation will come, what courses will be rotated out of their program of studies for these to be rotated in. The art program, there are two new art teachers, they are really looking into creating an actual program for the art department as opposed to just art courses. They've really put a lot of thought into what their program can look like in, in the future, and by having some prerequisite courses, et cetera, that everything builds off of each other. So most of the art courses we're proposing to put forward, there are a couple that are gonna be on hold so that we can start with the first prerequisite courses and then move on. The, all of the English courses that were proposed were recommended to put forward, all of the PE and wellness courses were recommended. There were two Spanish four courses that were recommended to put forward that we felt were not as, like, top burner at this time to make two different Spanish four tracks. So we held off on those for now. All of the social studies courses, we are proposing to go through, the department surveyed students and garnered interest, and there's also a lot of new updated social studies requirements, so these all kind of tie into those things. And then the last one was a yearbook course that was recommended, and we're requesting more information before we put that. So our ask tonight is that we get the okay from the board to move these forward into the next phase, so that the teachers can start developing actual units, curriculum, et cetera, for those, and then we can put them in the program of studies for January and make sure all of that is on track timeline-wise.
Questions from the board?
I just haven't had a chance to really, to read, this wasn't in the agenda early, all this detail. I don't know that I'm in a position to vote one way or another, honestly, on any of these today. And for each one of these classes, are we removing something else?
Potentially. In some cases you will, some are, you just need to add them. For example, like, the Holocaust literature course will just probably most likely be a straight addition, because there's different language and the state requirements upon what you have to teach early in terms of the Holocaust and, and different genocides and stuff like that. So some of these are in response to changes in state law, state statute, you know, so you have to add these in as part of your coursework. But for example, like, the art classes, they're looking to redo kind of the programming around all of that, so you're gonna see some coming out and some coming in. In other places I've been, this is my wheelhouse high school, and courses and stuff like that. When you ultimately approve these courses is when you approve the program of studies, right? So this is the first step to continue to work on these courses, right? When you get the program of studies for approval, usually in the January month, that would be our intention here, probably the second January meeting in terms of outlining this stuff out, that's when you're ultimately approving anything that has gone in there, right? So you can make adjustments to, to something that you didn't feel comfortable going into program of studies at that point and stuff. So this is like, we don't want teachers to do all the work of fully developing this course if there's something here that just is like, no, we can't get behind this, right? You know, so that's what it is.
And Tina and I were just having sidebar, so I apologize for having the link come in late, I meant to give it to Renee on Friday, I was at a conference, and it was the whole thing. But if we could do the vote, the first January meeting to move these forward. Um, but, um, if we could do the vote, the first January meeting to move these forward, then we could do the CHS, um, program of studies at the following, at the second meeting in January.
Okay, that works for time-wise, okay.
Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay, excellent. Um, I think the, the other question is, for these new courses, do we have a sense of how many students would be eligible for these courses?
That's kind of the million-dollar question. Like, uh, some of these are, would be open to, to kids of different grade levels, different ages, and we would have more wide openings, some of them are targeting more specific.
Right, there are a couple that are, um, recommendation only, um.
Spanish four honors, how many kids are actually?
Spanish four honors is not, those two Spanish courses, so if you, the easier way to look at this, I don't know if you're, if you go onto the spreadsheet, the course proposal reviews for board approval, um, the final determination column will tell you if it's a yes or a no.
Yep.
Um, the two Spanish courses were a no for this year to move forward.
Okay, so we're not looking at those.
We're not looking at those, so you just wanna look at the ones that said yes.
Okay.
And then like, so sculpture two, large sculpture in the art section is a hold for this year, so that one is not going to be going in.
So yoga is a yes?
Yoga is a yes.
Okay.
And really for, um, just for your knowledge, the, there's a lot of phys ed, um, proposals here, but they're really trying to target a, like, a wide demographic of student, um, as opposed to just having all, like, active sports-related type of courses and more like having a mix of those and having some more like sport studies and yoga and coaching, technically, how to do coaching and all of those kinds of, like, they're really putting a lot of thought into the program in that department as well and trying to reach a new demographic of student.
Are we gonna see esports on there next year?
No.
I knew it was coming, man.
I did.
It would have to be already proposed.
We did have a state tournament Saturday, spent seven, seven-ish hours at Sino there, uh, making sure everything went smoothly with NHIA. Legendary is your, uh, fall esports state championship, um, but no, but like classes like yoga, some of these other type of PE classes are growing at other schools, like.
Yes.
Well, I think it's yoga and the mindfulness, like it's not just.
Yes, and actually, Shannon is actually, um.
I know exactly where she's gonna.
Signed up for a course, um, that is going to get her certified.
Yeah.
And she can actually run, um, mindfulness things for us in the district at, for educators as well as students. So, um, it really provides a lot of great opportunities in a variety of areas.
Okay.
But we can wait till January too.
We can wait till January, I think I'd like more, some more time to go through the courses as well, so we'll table that and put it on for January. Thank you for the information, a lot of hard work into this, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, anything else from a curriculum standpoint?
All right, there's lots, but we don't.
All right, why don't we, uh, why don't we, uh, go back and, uh, we'll turn it back over to the student representatives, welcome. How was caroling this evening?
It was good.
It was really good.
What community or communities did you hit?
Um, we hit the one off like the four-way, the one that's like right there when you take the right.
Oh, that one.
Yeah.
There's four rights.
We were trying to figure out the name before we walked in.
There's only two four-ways, right?
It was nice though, we got some people.
You take a right from east and then you go to four.
People love it there.
Any direction is coming from me.
Christmas spirit, right? All right, what do we have for updates? Maybe.
Just gonna start off with, uh, winter sports. So, I mean, all winter sports are now in full swing, they've all started, not just basketball, so wrestling had its first duel meet against Franklin Newport on the eleventh. Uh, boys' basketball is two and oh after a recent win against Dairy Field. Girls' basketball has played two games and they're two, oh and two. Boys' basketball had their first game today at three thirty, or, boys' hockey, sorry, had their first game today at three thirty against John Stark, Hopkinton, Hillsboro, and Deer. And Winter Track is having a meet at New Balance in Boston.
Um, some of the past activities that we've had at the school are the Turkey Trot and then the Goffstown Student Council Winter District Meeting. Um, that went pretty well, that was last week, I'm pretty sure. Um, and then earlier this week, Campbell Student Council, a group of kids went around with a holiday drink cart. They delivered coffee, hot chocolate, and cookies, um, to the Campbell staff, they put their orders in, and then a group of kids got there early to make them all their drinks, everyone loved it, um, and we plan to do it next year.
That's cool.
Yeah, that's cool.
Um, so this week we're doing the holidays at Campbell and we're doing spirit days for all the days. Monday is Winter Wonderland, Tuesday is Fest of PJ Day, Wednesday is Head to Toe Day, uh, Thursday is Cheesy Holiday Cards Day, which is like, you just dress like, um, like it would be on a Christmas card, like the picture you would take for a Christmas card, and, uh, Friday is Ugly Sweater Day.
So that's cheesy?
Uh, yeah, they both are, they both are. And then, yeah, we had the caroling today, uh, I can talk about that, uh, I won't bore you, but it was caroling.
You could sing.
Yeah, we, uh, we, we were gonna do like an all-boys chorus, but we, there was enough houses, people, people weren't showing up, so. Yeah, we like, we stood out front of the, uh, is it like a community building, I guess, and we were lined up and we sang, cause they were doing like a little Christmas event, so we sang while they were walking in, and, uh, we did a few songs, and then we had like houses of people that, um, you know, we just wanted to hit, yeah, couldn't make it to the.
Yeah, so we decided to go to them.
So we were just going door to door and people were coming out and, I don't see, I don't know, animals, they were giving out, they were giving us candy, so. Yeah, we got a lot of thanks.
Worth it for candy.
People love it, so, and we've been doing it forever, what, what do we say, like twenty years?
Yeah.
Yeah, some lady came out, she's like, uh, she's like, you guys have been coming here for twenty years, you know, we love it, and they were, I mean, the people are getting emotional, so, just great for the community. Oh, forgot, uh, and then also, we have the, uh, winter concert, the nineteenth, and the staff breakfast is gonna be the twentieth, and that's like where everyone signs up, they bring in a bunch of food, and it's kind of like a bar, like, just for the staff, the, uh, the teachers, you know, everyone.
All right, and our future activities are pretty much just Christmas break right now, we have a lovely two weeks off, and I think everyone's very excited.
Sure.
Yeah, I think we're very popular amongst the Campbell High School students for the two weeks off.
Scoring some points, that's good.
Yeah.
And then, just like some student life things, we have, um, on, going on the, uh, We Are Campbell page on Instagram, we have vlogmas, which is just fun videos every day to, you know, kind of get everyone in the, like, holiday spirit. And then a lot of teachers are, you know, signing their final tests and projects before break, so, a lot of work getting handed out, that's it.
Well, finish up, uh, the last couple of days strong, right?
We will try.
Any questions?
Thank you for the update, lots of exciting things happening in Campbell and the, in the district, so appreciate all you do.
No problem.
What, my wife, uh, cause there's been, at each of the schools, obviously, a lot of food and, you know, at CHS specifically, there was a cookie contest for staff. Earlier this week, there was a cupcake, you know, uh, um, contest or whatever, competition and whatever, and I was talking to my wife yesterday, and she goes, the percentage of your job that's just judging cooking contests is not zero. I was like, no, I'm like, it's probably like actually two or three percent of the job. Is judging.
All right, we have our public minutes from December fourth, as everyone had an opportunity to review.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Shoemaker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Plansky, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, those carry five-zero. And, uh, we'll shift it back over to Ms. Ames for policy.
Yes, thank you, um, so, we wanted to first, and again, Tina and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but we wanted to start with, um, doing the formal withdrawal of some policies as we have over the fall replaced these policies with the new ones. Um, and so, we thought for clarity's sake, for housekeeping's sake, having it documented in the minutes that formal withdrawals of these, um, policies would be helpful.
Yep, so at the last board meeting, you did your second reading for BGAA, and we did that whole rollout of that. Um, part of it was then to, to withdraw these once that was approved, so like Heidi just said, this is the formal process to withdraw, um, those, 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 uh, those policies. That is the recommendation of NHSBA, to do that, so. Okay, uh, I will make a motion to withdraw policy BG, policy BGA, policy BGB, policy BGC, and policy BGE. Second, motion by myself, second by Mr. Shoemaker, additional discussion. I had those right, correct?
Yep, yep.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five-zero.
Perfect, I will, moving into our first reads for the night, uh, we have a little, little list for you here. Um, BEDH for the public participation at board meetings, um, I think these are pretty straightforward, they pretty closely align. Um, same with EBCA, we just wanted to make sure we had these updated, um, and had our emergency response plans. We ran them by the people that it needed to be run by, and so, um, these are ready for our first read. Uh, J, I think it's JJF, or is it JIF, I can't read it.
JIF. Right?
JJF.
JJF and JJE, um, these ones, so we spent some time as a policy committee really kind of dissecting these and talking about it, um, comparing our current policy with the language of the new NHSBA policy. I know we've been really trying to align ourselves with NHSBA language and recommendations, um, but we decided as a policy committee for our recommendation, which certainly doesn't have to be adopted here tonight, um, to do some sort of combination of the two in order to keep, um, some of the language that we have had in place and procedures that we have had in place, um, for these things while tightening up the language and aligning it with NHSBA. So what we did was we came up with a combination, which is the policy recommendation one, it's the top one. We wanted to make sure you could see the supporting information below each one, and then we did the same thing with student fundraising activities. These are areas that we are, um, trying to target to make sure that we have very clear policies that can be followed um, in each of the schools as we move through and tighten things up. Um, as I recall, looking at student activities fund management, um, the biggest difference between those was whether or not it should be the BA that is responsible for administering the funds as well as doing the audits, or if it should be the building principals that are responsible for administering with audits done by the BA. And so we had previously had in place that it was the BA that, that ran it all along. Um, the recommendation of the policy committee was to go ahead and start to put some of that responsibility onto the principals, but continue to, um, have that auditing, um, and support there for administration.
I think that makes sense, right, you wouldn't have the person who was administering the fund also do the audit.
Yeah, and, and, you know, Superintendent O'Connell indicated that when he was a principal, that's kind of how it was.
That was a check and balance, so, yeah.
Yeah.
So that is exactly why it existed, so like, as a principal, I would deal with, with, you know, Julie was my person there as well, you know, the day-to-day operations of managing that fund, that would be at our level, and then the business administrator would have like the kind of check to, to us to make sure that we were following everything correctly, right? So, trying to do the same type of process here, that's marrying the two policies together, um, with the language in here to keep that kind of oversight in place.
Does this address some of the observations noted in the audit?
It's, we're hoping it does, yes, so, this all seems to be coming together at the same time, which is good and bad, right? Like, we all were noticing the same kind of hiccups with some of our procedural-based stuff, so, putting it in here as a policy review while also trying to tight up some of the, the procedures in-house of how we do this, and then what you guys have been noticing in the manifest is all kind of coming together at the same time to kind of address these type of issues. So we need better consistence, this is no, no disrespect to anyone, just like, we need better consistency in a kind of tighter set of procedures written down in place for, for our student activities accounts. Um, just some better, um, you know, education for people of all shapes and sizes and different roles in, in the district on the importance of being consistent with how we utilize that fund. We get audited on this stuff every year, and like, we need to make sure that they don't get mad at us, the auditors, and we create problems with that. So we have to be very specific in how we do this across the district, so.
Good, well, the next part of this is, uh, adoption of it and following.
Yep.
Following it, so. All right, anything else for acceptance of first read?
No, these are just first reads, like we said, and then we started to get into some of the, for the next one, for JJE, student fundraising activities, that's the procedures, the completion forms, fundraising request forms. Again, that's to more get into the practice piece of it, the procedure piece of it. Those aren't necessarily things that we need to approve as a policy, um, committee.
Right.
Those, you know, we, we give the direction, we put a policy in place, and it's up to the superintendent to, you know.
Those are just informational pieces to see how we're gonna execute the policy once we make the adjustments to it.
But again, these are helpful for us in terms of how we're going forward and what's, you know, one of the questions is what's, what's been approved as a fundraiser in the past, and, and if somebody else wants to do that fundraiser, how does that work? And what if it's a completely new fundraiser, you know, when do they have to come forward before the board? So we, again, took a look at the new policy, our current policy in Litchfield, we took a look at the NHSBA language, and we tried to marry the two, um, to find the best, you know, for policy going forward for our district.
Well, thank you for all your help in making sure this is the right fit for our town. Um, okay, I'll make a motion to approve for first read, policy BEDH, policy EBCA, policy JJF, policy JJE.
Second.
You got it?
Okay, thank you, motion by myself, motion, second by Mr. Shoemaker, additional discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries five-zero. And we have seven.
Have a slew of second reads here.
Eight policies for second read.
Again, you know, we put these out here, we wanna make sure we give folks in town time to take a look at policies and see if they have any questions. We, to my knowledge, I've read correspondence and we didn't receive any feedback on any of these. Um, so hopefully we are ready to go ahead and enact these on a second-read final basis. Um, but happy to answer questions if something has come up.
Any questions on the policies for second read? I will make a motion to approve the following eight policies, BBBF, DAF, EBCA, GBGBA, IC, IG, IHAM, NKF.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Shoemaker, additional discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Carries five-zero.
Perfect.
Again, thank you for all your help.
No problem, I think we got a good groove going, although we did discuss we may make, um, the next few policy meetings sort of light, given that we have still, um, we're gonna be focusing on the election in March and language for warrant articles and finalizing everything. But, um, we'll meet in January and we'll go from there.
Yeah, hopefully we're making a good dent and, uh, getting caught up to speed here.
It feels, I, honestly, some days it feels two steps forward, two steps back, because as quickly as we update policies, we find out that there's additional policies that have been modified. It takes, rightfully so, it takes NHSBA a little while to, to put out their recommendations, and so as we check off things on our list, they add more to our list, so. Yeah, it still remains the same issue, but I think we're making a chunk, I think we're taking a chunk out of the time, so.
All right, uh, shifting gears, let's spend some time going into facilities.
The day is here.
The day is here.
Do you want, uh?
Well, before we start.
The kids.
Yeah, they can.
Yeah, they're good for this.
They're welcome to listen in or they can leave, whatever you want.
Caroling, or, yeah.
What's going on, is someone important doing?
Well, there's a big facilities update tonight on, uh, the facility survey that went out. You're welcome to stay, you're welcome to leave and enjoy your evening.
About the status of the buildings, maintenance, GMS recommendations.
I think it will be interesting, but, you know.
They're both sitting there like, oh, God, I really did it.
I don't know.
Everything we do is fascinating.
If you, if you think it's gonna be interesting, but you really wanna go home, you can listen in on YouTube.
I honestly love listening to these, these are so entertaining to me.
Well, there's one. We're off to the races then. I guess before we, before we. Facilities committee, you're welcome to join the table, if you have, please. Come on up, guys. This is a collaboration. And we can pull another seat up here, too.
Do you want me to put this PowerPoint up?
I'm just gonna hang out, that's the show.
Okay.
All right. You want me to pull the PowerPoint up?
Yeah, while you're pulling that up, I just wanna give you a quick update, so I think I'll let you guys know that Kyle Barker is been keeping me updated on state aid developments and, and the, you know, changes in the rules. And I, I know that I brought up last time talking about the potential for the need for pre-bond work, um, but we were really trying to figure out what the deadlines were for everything, so I have great news. Um, so the new rules, first off, the new rules say that any district receiving money has to receive the money in the same year. So that, why is that important? That's important with Concord, because Concord has a massive project coming, um, and so.
Um, and so this year, if they're offered the money, there is the potential that they may not take it, um, because they may want to try to wait to see if they could get more of what they need in one cycle. Um, the challenge with that, of course, is we don't know what money will be allocated in the future, so, they may take it, they may not take it, there were some developments with their town, uh, or city, with, uh, the way that the school board can not unilaterally move schools. I didn't read, I didn't follow up on that, so I can't tell you exactly.
We, well, yeah, spent a lot of time in that area.
Superintendent, Superintendent, so the good news about that is that we would not be voting, we would not need to be voting on something in March, because ultimately, money wouldn't, the next round of money wouldn't be offered until October or November. Um, and then if you're offered the money, you have, I can't remember, thirty or thirty-two months, did you?
Thirty-two months.
Thirty-two months, there we go, you did follow up with, maybe. So we have thirty-two months to accept, so that's great. That gives us enough time to really work through all of the stuff, and it also helps us get to a place where we can really truly work towards a solution, where we have a guaranteed maximum price and, you know, all that stuff. And potentially also know that we are in position to receive the money as opposed to we may receive money. Like, we'll be, by the time something's on the ballot, people will have a better idea of that, so. Um, the pressure's off a little bit with respect to that, so that's good. So then, uh, we will take a look at the survey results, so, um.
Can you share this with the, with the board members?
No. Of course we can.
Thank you.
Um, we ju- just so you know, we met yesterday to review this stuff, so, uh, Joe did this, I think, today. So that's why we haven't sent it to you.
That's okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
It will come to you. Um, so yeah, I mean, if you want to just go through, and do you, do you want to present it, Joe?
No, go right ahead.
You sure?
Yeah.
I don't want to steal the thunder, Dan, you want to present it?
Okay, no, I, I did it last night.
Okay. So I mean, you, you guys all know the purpose of, of why we did this, right? We need to get a better feel from the town, uh, as to when they show up at the polls, whatever the next solution is. We want to know that we have enough people behind it to not be spinning our wheels. So, that's what, that's the summary in a nutshell. Um, the timeline, so we, I can't read that, save my life. We started, we, I think we put, what, first week of September, was it?
Yeah, so, early September. Early September.
Early September, as you all know, we started the, uh, the outreach campaign, um, with the survey. We ended up closing it much later due to our printing snafus with the, the stuff that we sent home. But you know what, it ended up being good, we ended up with, uh, a total, well, you're gonna see it soon, we ended up with a total of eight hundred and seventy responses. Um, we did as a group go through and take a look at the responses, so we, we did try to put some controls in the survey to try to make sure there's not, not erroneous information being brought in by people who shouldn't be doing it, right? I think the primary concern was, is someone gonna come in and put five hundred responses in?
Yeah.
Clearly, that didn't happen, um, but we did have some where people would, you know, we, we, the control was to ask for their addresses, we are never sharing that information, it's already been scrubbed, but that was kind of the control, are you Litchfield residents? Uh, we had one wonderful person from Londonderry who felt inclined to respond, we did have to scrub that result. Uh, we had a few people that gave their street number only, uh, no idea where that's, you know, just a number. So we, we had to scrub some of those, but ultimately, we felt pretty comfortable with eight hundred and fifty-three of those results. So, that's what we've kind of narrowed, when you see the data, that's what, that's already been scrubbed down to the eight hundred and fifty-three results. Uh, we received two hundred and ninety-five comments. Um, a lot of the comments came around, what do you think the reasoning is that the last vote failed? Um, and we had, I think, what, nine different pre-populated options that they could select, as many as they wanted of those, but then they could also enter their own stuff, probably in hindsight, I don't know.
You're jumping ahead, right, so the two hundred and ninety-five comments was like question eleven of, is there anything else you want to share with us?
Oh, okay.
Those were separate from the response.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, but we also had, like, a million of the.
Yeah.
Right answers for that, too. Um, and then three hundred and sixty-eight respondents did provide emails and said that they would like to receive future communications. So I think that that's really great for us as a board, I know you guys wanted to know, and so, that's what we know. Alright, I gotta open this on my computer, because I can't.
This is what you were talking about. Yeah, screen stretching.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I have it on my computer, so, what am I on, here?
Slide five.
Excellent. No, do I have the wrong thing open? Sorry, hold on.
Different version?
Yeah, but it's the same one that Joe sent me today, so. Why does this page not look like this to me? I'm still getting, this is slide five.
You're on the older version? Yeah, that's old version.
This is the one you emailed me, like.
Is that the one I, wait, I just, I know.
Emailed it to me sometime during this meeting.
Oh wait, was I scrolled down too far?
Yeah.
I emailed it to you as I was walking in. There you are, okay, we're back in business. Um, so this is just talking about, uh, the best way for people, for us to communicate with people, they gave us their preferences. Uh, you know, email is obviously the most popular, Facebook, we know people love Facebook, I don't know that we're gonna be like, you know, ringing our, uh, bell through the WhatsApp group, but I know that they would love it if we would. Um, but we do have some good data on, on where people are gonna be, uh, you know, best hearing from us, so I think that that's, uh, it's pretty good. We can go on to the next one, so, um, the survey results, this one's really, I think this is really important, so, this is asking people what, what they thought the reasons were that things failed. I mean, the cost was too high, it just blows everything out of the water, right? I mean, it's, it's double everything else, so we, we know that, um, I think we all kind of suspected that to be the case. You know, unfortunately, the number two was lack of faith in the school board. Um, I, I hope that we're being perceived as trying to do as much as we can to, to build trust. Um, but that is, you know, unfortunately, number two, and then the LMS project overrun was very close, uh, thereafter, so, uh, that's apparently gonna continue to plague us until.
Might be interesting information to share with Kay.
Oh yeah, yeah, please, by all means, send this right over.
Yeah, and, and I guess the thing to point out, right, is that people could select as many entries as they wanted on this question, so it's not a direct one-to-one of, you're only gonna see eight hundred and fifty-something responses. I think all total, when I split this out, there was over twenty-three hundred responses for this question out of eight hundred and fifty-five that got divvied out. So there's eight hundred and sixty-six unique, and people responded to this question, but they selected multiple choices in here. Right.
Yep, the next few, I think, are, are pretty important, because one of the things that we struggled with with the last project was information, right? And I think that no matter what we try to do, we need to get, whatever happens in the future, we need a true PR campaign associated with it, we need the ability to help people understand what we're actually presenting to them, because it's super confusing. Um, so, for example, um, there was a lot of people that felt like we don't, they don't believe the options to reuse all or part of the existing GMS were adequately, um, investigated, you know, that's something that information can help people, you know, understand. Building was more than was needed, proposed bond structure was confusing, which, I, I, I mean, um, you know, I feel like, I thought it was, it was a creative way of trying to like, make things better, but it was confusing, so. Um, the location on the ball field was unacceptable, uh, the bond structure did not have a uniform cost per year, was, uh, you know, a hundred and eight people felt like that was the case. Um, and then seventy-eight peo- seventy-eight people responded that the existing building is adequate for our educational needs. Um, some of these will tie in, and just so you guys know, we had maybe a, I don't know, thirty, forty minute, like, really in-depth conversation about, we haven't like dove into the data as a group and like really digested, uh, to like a granular level yet, but we've, you know, you start to see, as you start looking at it, you start to make connections between different things that different people said, so.
Yeah, we, we haven't drawn insights, we haven't tried to connect, we're, we're not looking, this is just first blush, this is what the graphs look like. We sanitized it for comments, names, personal information, and that it's just a cut and paste.
Uh, the next question is around, um, what, what should we be prioritizing, right? We, we have a lot of back and forth of people saying, you know, it's just, you gotta just look at the cheapest option, or, or, you know, something along those lines, and so we really wanted to get a feel for, how much do people in the town care about educational needs? I mean, multiple people have pointed out, our teacher contracts passed, so we know that people in town value education, but as it relates to, uh, the GMS building, we really want to have an idea of where, where do the priorities lie? Sixteen percent of people felt like we should just be looking at the lowest cost, cost option, educational concerns really shouldn't have any impact in that. Um, thirty-three percent felt like it should be solely, not solely focused, but primarily focused on educational concerns. The overwhelming majority felt like it should be a balance. Um, so if you, and there was some back and forth at the, at the meeting last night, but if you take the two, fifty-one, plus the thirty-three, you see that over eighty percent of people do feel like some deference should be given to educational needs, but it needs to be done with, you know, with cost, and, and, so, one thing that I have pointed out, I pointed out at our meeting that kind of comes to mind for me, was like, as we were going through the process with the last designers, who we've now learned are very expensive designers, they were really good at telling us about, these are great things for education. And, and some of the things they were saying would be probably incredible to have, right? Like, you know, they talked about atrium space, but now, this will be in the back of my mind at all times. We have to look at everything that they presented and say, okay, but, how much is this serving educational need, and how much are we balancing costs here? Is this somewhere where we could be, where we, we could be reducing costs? Um, but I think it's encouraging, because as we look at the other stuff, um, and you, you're gonna hear more about the other results, but as we look at the other stuff, we're gonna start working on a matrix of, uh, Mr. Mitchell has presented to us some of the educational concerns, and we're gonna start working on a matrix, matrix of how different options may or may not address those concerns. Um, so now we're gonna get into the specific options that we've sort of put out there for, to get a feel on. So, would you consider renovating GMS without adding an addition? Um, I pers- I gotta be honest with you, I personally, pie charts don't do it for me, so I, I don't really, I don't find it super easy to look at this, but, um, we asked about whether people would strongly support something, would support something, would not support something, or strongly not support something. Um, but I did, we did put the numbers of the responses on the left, so that way you guys could actually see them if it's, if it's easier for you. Um, you know, one thing that we talked about, um, I'm, I'm just gonna mention it, because I think it's important for the, for the board to be thinking about how the board wants to analyze this data. Um, da- the three of us, at, at a minimum, had, felt that doing a weighted calculation, because we have strong preference versus, you know, normal preference in either direction, we felt like doing a weighted calculation would be an easier way to interpret the data. Um, there was some pushback at the committee, um, we had that on the slides, we took it off as a result of the committee's pushback, but for me, it was actually easier to look at that, so, what, what I've found is that if we look at, you know, this option, it's, it's generally, although things seem closer, you know, it's not like a, a blowout on this, um, it's generally less, this is a generally less favorable, uh, response to this. Uh, the next one would be, would you consider renovating GMS and adding an addition? Uh, if you look at the data as we go through this, this was probably the second most supported response. Um, we had a, I mean, you can see right there, the wood supports were forty-three percent alone, um, and then eighteen percent for the, with strongly supports. Next one, uh, would you consider, so, consider supporting a new GMS build in the future if the price associated with it was significantly reduced from the twenty-twenty-four Warren Article One? So, I mean, you can see it, it's, it's pretty substantial. Um, I will say that when this slide was revealed, there were members in the committee who said, well, this is just proof that this was just people who, uh, support the schools that answered this survey. That was a little disappointing to me, because we spent a long time trying to get this information out.
And if you go back to like the very first slide, there's the extensive outreach that we did.
Yeah.
Detailed in that slide, we were at elections, we were at town events, we sent out the mailer, there were signs everywhere. There was a lot of effort put out there to try and get as much uniform response as we could. The, the, everybody that's there at the committee did say, there's nothing else that we could have really done.
Prior to, prior to reviewing the, prior to reviewing this.
Prior to reviewing this, I mean, everybody was mentioning, what else could we do? I, it's, we did what we could, right? So, um, it comes down to who actually fills out surveys, and for what's their motivations behind it. So that, there is aspects into, um, what the survey says or doesn't say.
So you can see, I mean, for this, this option was, and we're gonna go through the last few, but this was by and large the most strongly supported option. Now, the challenge with this, of course, is we said a, uh.
What's significant?
Right, significantly reduced price, right? We don't, we, we don't know, right, correct, right, we don't, we don't know what that is. But, um, I think, well, well, we'll get, we'll get to that in a minute, go to the next one. Uh, would you consider sending eighth and possibly seventh graders to CHS? If you look, this ends up being the third most popular selection. Um, and I think, you know, we did do some exploration on this, um, but there, even amongst the committee, there is still a pretty high degree of, you know, feeling like, particularly people that were involved with the CHS project, who know that it was supposed to be designed to be expanded on with, you know, declining enrollments. They feel very strongly about this, so, um, I would say that this was, um, I won't talk about weighted stuff, but this was the third most popular.
This one is interesting to me, because all it mentions is sending some, is moving some of the ninth grade up to CHS. It doesn't say anything about the configurations of the other.
Go to the next one.
Oh, okay.
This one talks about like shifting, right? And, and actually, um, so again, for me, like, I had to look at it weighted, this was very close to the seventh and eighth, right? Um, so there's, there is a fair number of people that feel like this would be an acceptable option. And then to no one's surprise whatsoever, the next slide, no one wants us to send the high school out of district. Well, not no one, I shouldn't say no one, there are.
Eleven percent?
Yeah, I, I mean, that's, that's more than no one, but it was a very large proportion of people.
That's the one that's most popular, or the, the answer that was the greatest, was seventy percent of people said, I don't want to send the kids out of town.
The greatest was actually new GMS on.
With an addition?
Yeah. New GMS, no, new school at a lower cost was.
So you can define lower cost, that's gonna be a tough.
Yeah, so, uh, I don't remember, did we have more slides after this? No, so, yeah, so that's, um, that's what we, that's what we got. Um, so we talked as a group, and we said, okay, where, where do we go from here? Well, obviously, we need to do the matrix thing, we need to figure out what, you know, how do these different things fit in? Um, but we felt like, from a very brief initial conversation, that we should probably at least start with our minds framed around three, the top three things that people seem to, to be interested in. And then we haven't really discussed where we go right now with, you know, what the next deep dive's gonna be, but it's gonna involve looking at a matrix of the, um, needs. And also, I think that a lot of the committee was really interested in the onsite insight report and having that presented as well. Did I miss anything? No, for the first time ever.
So further looking into these three options, you know, we have, we had done preliminary research into, into the same three options. Um, as far as potential costs, you know, what would need to be done at each of the buildings if we were to reconfigure in any way, that sort of thing. Um, so is the committee, like.
How much are we gonna redo?
Right.
Yeah, so, um, we did not get to have a substantive conversation about, I mean, obviously, you know, I was, I participated in that stuff, so I have seen many times, uh, or I've heard Kyle Barker present on, this is what I looked at for these options. This is why we, you know, this is, we determined what this could be, I mean, he, he continues to update his numbers just in case we say, hey, you know, what are these things? Whether the committee's gonna decide that they want to actually look at that. I know, I know the ultimate feeling of the committee at large is that the next major step will be actually retaining, putting out a bid for someone to come in and help narrow these things down, right? That's what we're.
Yeah, I mean, I, Matt touched on it, or sorry, Mr. Shoemaker touched on it. Um, that I, I think what the survey provides is possible routes on how to solve the problems. Mr. Mitchell's list of a thousand paper cuts, the onsite insight report, and all of the other seventeen billion reports dating back to, you know, before I was born, um, list basically arose in that matrix, right? Now, I mean, if you wanted to do a pure scientific engineering, just cut your losses, you check the box. Whichever one has the most checks for, that satisfies the, the need, right, is the one you pursue. Um, but.
Well, with factor of, with cost factor.
Right, right, but I would say cost is one of those row items, right, of where, where that comes into play. My, um, beyond that, I think that's gonna be the next major step, but I think the committee needs to digest this information, there is a hundred and fifty different ways on how to interpret the survey, and there's a hundred and fifty ways to interpret the onsite insight reports, right? Because we, we were given advance looks at that as well, so, um, I think. Because we we were given advanced looks at that as well. So, um, I think it's just, it it's, you know, we're kind of into a tough period of we're battling people's opinions and trying to come up with a cohesive, you know, approach to this versus, you know, somebody saying, I want this, or I think this, right? It it's gotta be a cohesive approach.
Yep.
I think as a board, one of the, one of the thoughts that collecting, correct me if I'm speaking on behalf, but one of the things that we've been hopeful for that the FIC would feed us is direction on a collective decision.
Yeah.
Right, on what your position is and what your recommendation is to the board on what you think the right direction is.
Yep.
Right, given the kind of grassroots efforts that the whole board was founded on, right? Is it a seventh and eighth addition on Campbell and a restructuring of GMS to be a smaller footprint and getting rid of the portables and keeping LMS the way it is or whatever it is? Or is it reshuffling GMS and building new and I don't know, right? What what are those recommendations? I know you're kind of relying upon all this information now that you have to kind of put that together, but the timing of when that recommendation is forthcoming is what I'm interested in.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think the next big conversation that we need to have as a committee is getting behind an interpretation of the data, at least as a a majority of the committee, right? We may not all agree, but we need to have a general collective agreement of, we we feel like if we analyze this five different ways, we feel confident in these three approaches, and then again, I don't know if it's, you know, the the problem with, um, you can go pay anyone to give, to come do any sort of study for you, right? Come, right, but like, how much, how much of that do we wanna keep going out to bid on, especially until we're narrowed down, right? So like, I, I know with certainty that Mr. Barker would come back and, you know, if the committee says, okay, we do now feel confident that the town would support these three options over others, we can at least, you know, revisit some of those, talk about some of the challenges, talk about some of the benefits, um, look at those things in terms of the matrix that we're creating, and then continue to make some more funneled decisions towards, now we are ready to put out an RFP for further investigation in this direction. And and to be honest with you, some of that will be uh repetitive because we have done that, but, you know, unfortunately, there were drivers that drove a a project, you know, an RFP that was disproportionate to what should be in a town like this. Um, so that's, that's where that's gonna be going. Other thoughts?
Well, I agree with Andrew on the timeline of it and how that gels with the the timeline for building aid.
So, as I mentioned, we have thirty-two months, once we're awarded. We would potentially, if we were awarded building aid in.
So what do we need to submit and when?
Okay, so actually, uh, that's a good question. So the the next thing that we need to do is we need to submit our letter, um, come April.
April first, by April first.
The one thing about the letter is it's our opportunity to provide updated costs. We can't change the scope of the project, like what we've already applied for, right?
You can't change, yeah, the intent of the project, right?
Has to still tick all the boxes on our application.
Yeah, so you had an application that you got points for, for safety, for age, for this, whatever.
But I don't think we can even switch from to a renovation, can we?
I. Renovation solves all those.
My short answer is no.
Right.
Because it's changing how you were scored in that application for that, so.
I thought Carl had said that if you check all the boxes, if you resolve all the open issues that were on the application, you can do anything.
We could have the superintendent ask again, but my my understanding was that we couldn't switch the type of project.
Yeah, in like simplest terms, you propose a new building, you need to build a new building to get the.
So.
The A that was associated with that.
Here's why that's not, here's why that's not a big deal. It does it pigeonhole us to having a new building? Absolutely not, right? We just have a good position in in that lottery right now, so it would be foolish to not just put in a letter and say, hey, we wanna stay in the lottery.
Hundred percent.
If they, if they offer us the money, you know, we still have thirty-two months to finish what we're doing, potentially have one election where we can, we can put a warrant for pre-bond work to get to a guaranteed maximum price. For, you know, they would do the civil engineering, we would know, you know, because people said, oh, we don't think the ball field's suitable. Well, if we do pre-bond work, we're gonna have civil engineering where we can show civil engineering reports. We did look, by the way, at civil engineering reports that were done previously for the last one, so that's how that was based off of, but they would do updated civil engineering reports, and we would get to a place where the following election cycle, which is well within the thirty-two months, um, even if we missed one, we would still be okay. Of course, we still have GMS that's like, you know, being held by duct tape, so.
Right.
There there's that piece of it, but.
Right.
Um, but ultimately, we would have the time and and the the sort of runway to do this in a way that we would have enough information out to people, so. A couple of things, oh, I I guess I need more questions about the survey, so.
No, but I mean, I, I, the only other point, you kind of mentioned it with your duct tape comment, right? The thing to be mindful of is thirty-two months, right? Plus your build time of two years, right?
Right.
You're now talking a GMS of another five to seven years out there.
Yep.
From tonight.
But I I think no matter how you look at it, I don't, doesn't matter if we put something on the warrant article and it gets approved in March, you're still looking at that. There still needs to be a concept of what do we do with the current state of GMS to get us until whenever that solution is ready. And that that's where I I think, right, so once we decide on a direction, then it's gonna be up to ultimately the school board and by flow down to the FIC to look at, wh- what do we attack and deal with today? And and I know this came up at the meeting last night, is um the fear of putting something into GMS that may be a sunk cost. And I don't, there are just gonna be some things that you can't get away from, right? It's so, I mean, i- if we're told that we need a new roof, it it's gonna be a sunk cost, but it's the uh kind of the after effects of not dealing with it earlier, right, and not coming up with a solution that could pass earlier. Not putting that on anybody or anything, it's just, it's that symptom of it.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Peoples pointed out yesterday, uh, part of the discussion, which I, this is the next part of what I need to talk to you guys about, um, is, you know, we're still at a point where we have these three options, right? It'd be great if we knew, you know, let's just say it was renovations plus additions, like the the most commonly proposed solution there would be de- demolishing part of the building closest to the road, not the nineteen thirties building, or closest to the road, um, and building on the back of that, right? So, so to Mr. Peoples' point, like, if we're gonna be investing money in that part that we know we're gonna demolish, like, does it make sense, right? But we're not, we just simply, as as hard as we're trying, we're just not there yet. We can't tell you like, absolutely, this is what people support uh definitively. So, what's been happening around all of this, um, and I I don't know, I can't, there's been so many meetings lately, I can't remember what Mr. Oblenis has come to and what he hasn't come to for for this. He has been trying to address some of the things that have driven the the, some of the other decisions, right? Like the particularly safety issues were his his big thing. He came forward with a proposal, it was like a hundred and.
Thirty-five thousand. It's it's somewhere, you know, north of a hundred, south of a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
I don't remember exact.
And it was things like build a fence around GMS, put monitors at the doors, uh, which we can hire anyways. A bunch of stuff. Uh, I think he he may have said it to this whole board, I can't remember.
It was detailed out in his August eighth memo.
Yeah, and so we, um, we have continued to have conversations about that at the FIC. We do, you know, we do feel as though it's something that we need to address. He's bringing it forward to us. Um, and Mr. Mitchell, uh, so in terms of the safety issues, you know, one of the safety issues is sort of elopement from the school. You got runners who are pretty close to the road, we don't want them getting hit by a, you know, dump truck. And so, uh, you know, Mr. Oblenis said, oh, we could put fences all around the school. There's a lot of challenges to why that may or may not work. Um, but Mr. Mitchell did some research and did find that there are delayed egress systems that could be put on the doors, um, that are, I I wasn't saying reasonably far, he he identified nine doors that he would target, that he would feel like would at least address the elopement issue. They don't address, you know, if someone barrels into the side of the school, but like, you know, the elopement issue, students running out. Um, he he did some very preliminary research on it. I think he said that it was somewhere between like twenty-four and thirty-six thousand dollars for all nine.
Seven to thirty-six.
Um, yeah, but that's not, but that is not a, that is not a firm number, that is a.
Yes.
Him looking at the different options. So, you know, the committee did elect to have me bring that to you, just to bring that to your attention and see if that was something that you guys wanted to consider. But a- and and so, uh, Mr. Mitchell felt, and I know Mr. Peoples is here, he's gonna say, he's gonna shake his head no. Uh, Mr. Mitchell felt that some of these systems might be able to be reused, but Mr. Peoples said that it's typically designed to that specific door, so chances are it wouldn't, we don't know the answer, so we don't have a definitive answer on it.
But something like that where it it's an imminent safety risk, I feel like with five years still being in that building, potentially.
So that was the FIC's, that's why they had.
Need to do something, yeah, yeah.
Um, so that's one thing for consideration. Um, the other thing, uh, that Mr. Oblenis feels very strongly about is with, there's a lot of challenges to this one, but a no-left-turn policy uh on three A coming into the school for pickup and drop-off, which would basically, you'd have to find a way to divert people south of the school to be able to come.
I don't think that's a school policy, I think it's a board policy.
Right, it's a, it's, well, it's a, I mean, that's a, that's a DOT, right? That's a state highway. We have DOT, and that would be the slogan, right? We would, but the 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 request was that the school board consider discussing that with the.
Why doesn't the school board just fund a a turning lane?
So I I I think Mr. Oblenis's.
You have all this money, so.
Question about that, right, is, and I know Mr. Peoples brought this up as well, is it's not a yay or nay that from the town, right, we gotta go through, but just go see what it would take, right? Do we need to go get DOT permission to put a sign up there? It and it's just do the, you know, the people work in the emails to figure out what that state is.
To Mr. Oblenis's credit, I I do understand, right, like if you if you're queued up alongside the school going north, and then there's people waiting to turn left coming south, you've got people that are sliding in between those two lanes of traffic going north, and then you've got people trying to go around them.
Oh, it's a mess.
So it is, I I do understand.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, it's gonna be a pain in the, pain in the backside for a whole bunch of folks.
But then you have the drop-off line going up Pinecrest.
Yep.
Yes, but it's better than being on three A.
Front of Campbell was widened.
Right.
Right.
Same, same issue.
Yep.
Yep.
So, just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
But you can honestly put the sign there and like, who's gonna enforce it?
Right.
Right, there's not somebody standing out there going, pull over, I'm gonna write you a ticket, like, that doesn't happen.
Unless we hire a detail, I'm just kidding.
We have the money coming from, yeah.
So that, uh, did I miss anything, guys? It's it's helpful when these meetings are so close together, I don't have time to forget. That's that's where we stand. Um, we, our next meeting is, is it calendared yet, or did we?
Not calendared. I do have an email out to John Brunel to look at the next six months worth of meetings to get us through, like, you know, first half of twenty-five. That way, it's all in the calendar and set.
Yeah. We will, before we set anything, let's coordinate with the the onsite insight.
Yeah, I so I, I'm gonna consider that, like, wherever that falls, I'll just, you know.
Our meeting.
Yeah, our meeting, we would cancel that to meet up with the date for the onsite insight.
Yep, okay, and then I just would like to thank the FIC committee. We have a lot of people on it that are continuing to show up. I mean, they're they're participating.
Absolutely.
Um, and and really from a lot of, you know, boards in town too, so it's nice to be able to have.
Thank you.
Lot of great work. Right, I I think my my closing comment is when I.
Give it to me now.
Made is, well, it's it's timing again, right? It's what are we doing to drive action so in a year from now, we are prepared for whatever that warrant article discussion is, for whatever dollar amount it is, um, and and how are we working back on that timeline?
Yeah, so I think it, we're getting closer to being able to start building timelines. I think that the most critical thing for this, you know, first, we built this committee that is very diverse, um, and if you watch the first couple of meetings, it was hot. Um, but it's continued to gel, um, and now the most important thing is to get these diverse groups of people to come to some sort of agreement on direction, and then then we can really start doing the work towards deadlines and actual deliverables. I just, we need, we need to have that, you know, they all, all these people reach out into different groups, and that's what we've been missing, I think, in the past. So I I'm encouraged by that, and we will get some timelines.
No, but so for like you guys, as you as you're running it, right, so I would like with you to have your agenda structured over the next six months and say, all right, by X day, you know, we are going to target an RFP by this date, right? We are going to need school board approval by this date, right? We are going to need RFP response by this date, right?
Right.
So we have that.
You need to make our decision by this day.
Yeah, exactly, right?
No, and and that's kind of the hope of having meetings set in stone, right, is, cuz, um, I mean, I'm into my busy season with work, Matt's coming on the backside of his, right, is, you know, I would like to meet with Matt and come up with that, what that structure would be. Not dates, but milestones, right? So you you start doing a milestone roadmap and you start working your way backwards. But yeah, I mean, like, as Matt said, that this is, this is just as much about as getting an answer as getting everybody comfortable with that answer. Because if people are not comfortable, then the communication's out to the rest of the community, it it's, you're, we're gonna be in the same exact.
Have the buy-in.
I think you have a, you you do, I I've watched a few of the meetings, um, I can't watch all of them because it's not good for my health, but. But you do a really great job of, um, making sure everyone feels heard, um, and moving the conversation forward. So I I appreciate the time that, you know, you three, and the whole committee are putting into this. It's really, it's, you know, definitely a labor of love and 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 a lot of work, having been there myself. Um, I think at some point, I think people need to kind of agree, and this is the tough part, to put their opinions aside and make decisions based on the factual information that you have in front of you.
Right, you're gonna have to call a vote at some point, right?
Yeah, no, and and we we've started doing the little mini things of many votes of, you know, it it's, all right, what does everybody think, right? It it's not up to Matt or I to say what we discuss at the me, uh, I mean, agenda-wise, but when conversations get derailed and people make motions, it it comes down to, it it's a majority vote by the committee, right? It's not Matt or I putting our foot down and saying no, it's, or somebody else saying yes. So I guess, from my standpoint, I, what is the board's objective for us to have a decision by? Like, realistically, with everything in front of us, and I mean, I'm gonna tell you, March, June, not gonna happen. So it's gonna be, you know, realistically, right, to try to weed through everything, especially if we don't get the onsite insight um, until January of some point, right, call it the first, not the first week, but the second week of January or beyond, you're probably looking at, there's at least gonna be dis- discussion, people need to digest, they need to come back with their own insights. So you're looking at February for that to be digested. Now, you gotta combine everything, you gotta go through the matrix, that's probably March and April. So I, is it by like November of next year? You you want a direction?
Way earlier.
Way earlier.
I would say September, first meeting in September.
Oh, I think even earlier than that.
Cuz here's the deal, right? I mean, if we're going to have to have a bond, right, for whatever it is, we need to have a bond agent. We need to have a here, like, the the whole process takes time, right, and the RFP process takes time.
So the the big question right now is the is, what is the next step, right? So if the next step, just hypothetically speaking, and I'm not, I'm not advocating for this, but it is the only one option that I can definitively give everyone right now. If we said we're gonna unpack the work that Kyle Barker did to look at, he's looked at all these options, right? So if we were gonna unpack that, look at all of that stuff, how how much can we rely on that to then say the next step beyond that will be an RFP to get someone to come in to actually do the the greater detail?
On all three options?
Right?
And that's, I mean, that's my question. Do you decide, do you decide which direction you're going in before you get somebody to come in and and work on the bigger details? Or do you have somebody come in and redo the work?
Well, I think, I think that's the challenge, right, is that I I know that we have a lot of work from Kyle Barker, and I know that it's costly to get that work.
Yeah.
But I can't just, you know, let it really say, well.
No, I know, yes, I know you can't, but. Yeah.
Right, well, right, but the committee is going to, go ahead, what were you gonna say?
I I was gonna say that if that work is out there, is it concisely put together somewhere that can be digested and received, right? So, cuz like my, I guess my perspective would be is if that work has been done, then that needs to be on an agenda item for the FIC to digest that information on the three options that we put forward. There is going to be kickback on, it was presented by us, by Barker and Associates, and there there is some unfavorable looks at it. I, it is what it is, but at least it's gonna be, you know, I'm, we're not gonna go waste another million and a half.
You'll have the big picture.
To to go look at, you know, to go recreate that work and, you know, bring in the timeline.
Just thought, in terms of what to do, decision-making, all that's.
Just thought, in terms of what to do, decision-making, all that stuff. You know, newer to this whole process, I don't have the history of all you are, but looking at onsite, looking at these survey results, listening to the conversation at facilities. I'm starting to think the decision that needs to be made sooner than later is seventh and eighth grade. What is the final decision around seventh and eighth grade? If you're gonna move them to CHS, then that's one set of dominos that falls, right? Like you talk about reconfiguring other schools, consolidating whatever the case may be. And then you start the work down that road. If you're not gonna move seventh and eighth, then you go down that road. I think that is the domino you have to answer and that people have to accept whatever the answer is on that. Because hypothetically, if you were to keep everything as it is right now, right? Then you're addressing something GMS related that's pre-K through four. And that is that, right? If you're gonna bring seventh and eighth grade up to CHS, then you're gonna look and make a decision around LMS. Right now presently configured, you can fit four grades in there. That's it, no more, no less. Perfect for four grades, right? So you're either gonna keep that configuration of four grades there. At that point, it would be three through six. Or you're gonna talk about expanding that, or you're gonna talk about, you know, building a pre-K through two or renovating GMS for pre-K two, or whatever the case may be. That's the target age that you're going at there. You gotta make a decision around seventh and eighth, right? And I think that's what you gotta iron out here because then that tells you the scope of your other projects and what you're gonna zero in on, on your funding.
So there's a chicken and the egg aspect of this though?
Yeah, there is, yeah.
And so what we've historically run into a problem with, and I'm not gonna rely, I'm, I'm just gonna tell you what the Barker data has sort of presented to us. I, I'm not gonna say whether it's correct or not. I know the committee has feelings about that and may want someone else to say that. But ultimately, Kyle has continued to say that by the time that he does, addresses the things that need to be addressed with that option um, or the renovation plus addition option, you're gonna end up with a solution that's in the twenty million, twenty, twenty-five million range. And by the time that you, i- if he can get a new school down to the mid-thirty range, if we can get state aid that comes up to, you know, potentially up to ten, right? Cause I think that we, we may qualify for more at this point, then you may be bonding the same amount.
I do, but I still think you need that question answered, right? Like if that's a deal breaker for your community to put the seventh and eighth grade and by the survey results, I was, you know, I don't necessarily have a horse in the race, but like I was, it was an interesting answer that there seemed to be more people than at least I anticipated on board with that idea. Just seventh and eighth, like I'm talking there, right? And, you know, uh, just having casual conversations with different principals, administrators across the state about the configuration, the nine through twelve to seven through twelve. Like I think you just have to have that answer concrete, where either, that, that's either an option or it's not. Because everything else is a, and because I think, you know, money might end up being the same of that, but like that's where the educational need I think slides in and you address those kind of concerns. Like seventh and eighth is either up there and this is what that means. They're essentially following a high school schedule, right? You're putting twelve-year-olds in the same building as eighteen-year-olds, right? You're doing all of these things here. Like people have to be either comfortable or not comfortable with that, right there. And I can go both ways with it, to be honest, like, you know, but.
I think you're completely right. And thinking out loud, is there an option for some type of advisory warrant article about to gather that town opinion? I, I, and I'm thinking out loud, because I don't know that we wanna wait until March to do it.
Well, I mean, I think what you.
Would that be without a cost associated?
That's the other one.
It, it would just be a true, false question, yes, no question?
And that's what we would need to talk about.
So then the other question that I would have, right, is, and I guess from your expertise, Mr. O'Connell, um, is what, what is that list of domino effects? And how does that apply to all the other schools? Because my personal opinion on the seventh and eighth grade, if you're gonna do that, you're gonna leave a hole in LMS, you may as well redistrict and restructure the other two buildings.
I mean, that's, that's why that has to be answered first, right?
There's all of those things.
That's why that has to be answered.
Right. I mean, it, it's the most efficient utilization of the, of the physical buildings that we've got. So I think from my aspect, it would be what, if we could get, what is that domino effect?
Right, so the other, the other piece of that domino effect, just that we have to be cognizant of is we have to touch all three schools.
Exactly. Understood.
Or you don't. Like that's the domino, right?
I don't know if we have to touch LMS.
You have to make that decision, right? Decision A, either CHS is nine through twelve or seven through twelve, right? That's decision A. You make.
No, it would have to be three to six if you move seventh and eighth up to the high school. It's four grades.
Or LMS would be under, would have a lot of room.
You would wanna end up with four grades in the LMS building. Because that's what that building is built for, right? And you just invested all the money in that building, right? So you gotta make the decision, either it's nine through twelve or seven through twelve at CHS, right? And then the next decision becomes, do you maintain LMS, like the building as it is with four grades, or do you add on to it? And then if you make that decision, right? And once you make that decision, you're committing to three through six. Then that decision might be made for you, right? Cause then the discussion becomes, you have pre-K through two, what do you wanna do with it, right? Do you wanna renovate? Do you wanna to build new? Do you wanna do whatever? That's what it is. That's why I think that seven and eighth grade answer needs to be solved because that's the domino. And then you can start talking, bringing in the cost aspect of it, right? Because I do think that equal value of like, the overwhelming value there was educational need and lowest cost, the combination, right? So I think you gotta look at both of those evenly. I think looking at the educational need of seventh and eighth and whether or not CHS can adequately do that, right? I'm not saying it will be automatically the best thing in the world if you did that. And like there are pros and cons, like that idea of like, you're putting a twelve-year-old with an eighteen-year-old is a very real thing. There are a lot of seven through twelve plants and facilities where yes, seven and eight are on the same campus as nine through twelve, but they're very separate.
We can't do that with the current building, with Campbell.
We can't do that with current buildings. So we would have to have them all intermingle. Now there are schools where they all intermingle, right?
Or require renovations and additions at CHS, which is the other.
Yeah, but even before we do that.
I think it requires renovations and additions at CHS regardless of.
The degree though can be.
Just to the degree of it. Because we're gonna have to add core services.
But it comes down to.
Add core services, services. CHS was built for six hundred kids.
No, that's not, but it's not, it's not how it works.
I think we're spiraling out of control here. We're getting into solutioning. And I wanna bring it back, okay? I mean, we started off this conversation with a time and with a timeline. And to answer the original question, I think I need a decision by March.
Yeah.
I want a direction by the FIC by March.
Right, but again, this conversation that we're having, like, I could tell you that I wanna give you a decision tomorrow. But like, can I do it? Like, we're not magicians, you know what I mean? Like we're.
No, but I think you can. If you put the deadline on it and say we have to come up with a decision by March, right?
People have to.
I just wanna make sure, I just wanna make sure that whatever we're giving you is gonna be something that actually stands a chance.
But well, but that allows the board to then make decisions and allows us time to react to if we do need to issue an RFP, right? If we do need to engage with another architect, if we do need to spend some money out over our capital accounts too, and like, we need time to be able to do that and I can't be rushed in doing that.
Yeah, I understand.
That's why.
I don't disagree.
Thanks, Joe.
Sorry. Kinda pushing this like all along, right? We just needed to know the end date and back into our timeline from there, like give us a, a brick wall to run into and like that's where we are.
The second, the second board meeting in March when we have a new board in place.
Yeah, I was gonna be generous and say March thirty-first, just to.
Yeah, I mean, I have a baby coming in January, so that's great for me. I'll just work through the burr. I'll just, you know, she can deliver. I'll be at FIC.
The only thing that you're, you're, I feel like you're gonna struggle with, whatever recommendation comes forward, it's gonna be a majority vote and you're still gonna get the naysayers that are gonna blast it.
Always.
Always.
Yeah, there's no avoiding that.
Right, but it's also, but it's also the reach of the naysayers, right?
We need a super majority. And we're, we, the work we're doing right now is trying to ensure that we can at least get a super majority of support. And so, I mean, we've, we saw what happened as we got close last time. The people that maybe didn't wanna participate became very vocal. And so we're trying to find a way to get as many people who may be in factions that might historically come out only to say no, to at least be able to help us get information out there that's accurate. And the only way they're gonna do that in a way that's fair and favorable to the process is if they feel like they're on board with it. So that's what we've been trying to do. But I'm in March, I'm in March. You have a good direction?
But I, I think that's part of it, Matt, right? Like you gotta have the time to run that campaign of helping people understand, right? If we don't come up with a decision on what the direction should be, we, we wanna recommend, then you don't have the time to like, do the legwork to plan it out and then get out there and actually sell it.
Right, right. Yes.
So I guess from my perspective, Mr. O'Connell, are you able to put together a list of perceived domino effects of seventh and eighth moving to CHS? I don't, like, not super detailed, but.
Yeah, so a general idea?
Yeah, just a level of, we gotta think about this, we gotta think about this, we gotta think about capacity and utilization of all three buildings, right?
I can do a general.
I know some of the superintendents in these schools, right?
I do.
We've talked about touring some of them.
Well, not even touring, but what has worked well and what hasn't?
Right, and I think it's what your comfort level is, right? Like that idea, like I hate to keep drink, bringing home this, but I think that's like the foundational answer that people have to. Are you comfortable with a twelve-year-old and eighteen-year-old together, right? Because even if, even if we elect down the road, like we put them all together and we're gonna go through some renovations to, to do bigger separate, that's not gonna be an immediate thing, right? The immediate result, if you put seven and eight in CHS, you're gonna have that wide range of ages. And it's a different type of developmental range than it is when you have the K through the six together in a school like that, right? It just is, like that, that, I don't need to share with anyone the differences between a twelve-year-old and eighteen-year-old, right? So you have to have that fundamental whether or not you're comfortable with that, like whether or not they're interacting. And then you talk about additional educational needs, right? If the seventh and eighth grade is in there, we're not, either we elect not to renovate the building or at least just start with how it is currently, currently constructed, right? Like we're not gonna be able to snap our fingers and separate people out. That means the seventh and eighth graders have to follow a high school schedule, right? They gotta fall into that block, a semester-based schedule, an alternative type of day, not the crazy schedule they are because you gotta utilize class space in that way. You gotta use your cafeteria space in that way, you gotta use your gym that way, right? So they're gonna mirror many high school schedules in that seventh and eighth. That's different than the educational model we currently have, five through eight. So people have to be comfortable with that, right? Like that's the do- next domino of that. If that's okay, right? And we start being okay with that, then maybe we don't need the renovations, you know, and adjusting some rooms. If you were to combine two other grades up there, like the, the easy solution that people say is like, well, you have the room already. Right, but like that room is dedicated for facts, right? There's all these ovens in here, this, we might have to change that room. That's a technology room right there, right? We'd have to change all that. There's a cost associated with that. You'd have to do all these kind of other kind of changes and balance your schedule. You might limit some of your educational offerings, right? Because you can't have class sizes in the high school of say fourteen kids because you gotta make sure they have like twenty in there because you need the room space to put your kids and stuff. You're gonna have to move your SAU out. So where are we going, right? You know, like those type of things. But, and that isn't, you know what, a lot of school districts, but a lot of school districts do those two things, right? They take the SAU, they put it in the old schoolhouse, right? And/or they put it in their portables, right? Like those are two really valid answers to those things.
Didn't you talk once about having the SAU kinda spread through all the schools at one point?
Yeah, I mean, you can do that. Some buildings do that. I think there are pros and cons to that, you know, like. But, and those are minor, minor, minor. Yeah, there's a minor thing.
That's why I just stayed. I know at the last meeting, it was the last meeting or the meeting before, someone asked if we can get a better understanding of the utilization. Cause I know Jake has, Jake has presented it, but it's been presented as like, okay, well, we need it presented in the light of if we were to try to move seventh and eighth here, what would that look like based off of current utilization?
Yeah, and I think people have to respect what we say with that. And when I say that is like, that room's empty, therefore class can go in there. It is not that simple. For example, if we have a special education classroom, right? Where there's confidential stuff all over the room, right? And confidential services going on in there. You can't just one period have that special ed room going on and the next period have a math class going on. There's, you're just opening yourself up to liability concerns, right? So there is some of those dominos that like, if this is a lab-based classroom, right? And you're gonna have the, the physics lab set up all day, you can't put freshman general study class in there, right? Or seventh grade general studies in study hall in there because you're gonna have problems, right? So like people have to respect when we say like, I know that room is open, but you cannot necessarily fill that with a random class. Now, if an English room, say, was like a typical English room was open, right? Like you could supplement and put a social studies class into the next period. That is a nice one for one. But like a facts and math sharing the same classroom is gonna be much harder to do.
So given this direction though, or this, this exploration, it would be very helpful. We don't have our next meeting scheduled yet, but it'd be very helpful if we could at least, I think that's the next thing we need to talk about is, what are we looking at?
What it really looks like to do that. And that's why I think that domino is, like I started to play around with that. And like in physi- like in your very, very top view, do you have at least the physical rooms to do it? Sure. But that's assuming all rooms are designed exact, like have the same purpose, general. And like, you're ignoring that that's an art room down there, that that's a facts room down there, that that's this room down here, right? So let's do that tier. Yep, we could fit six hundred bodies in there, right? Like that's, that's a hundred percent true statement. But now let's go down to there. What does that mean, right? Like, and go from.
And I think I mentioned this before, right? There's a difference between capacity and utilization.
And the other piece to remember is if, if seventh and eighth grade, moving or not moving, is the first domino, GMS doesn't get addressed until the last domino.
Right, which is the struggle with all this, right? Like, and just like, you know, I know people want an answer for GMS, but like what that ultimate solution is and like, what it might not be is GMS, but the third school in the district, right? Is that it may not be what it currently is, which is a pre-K through four school, right? And people have to know that. But like, you gotta kinda stop, start at that big picture. You have this building that like, it, it's the newest of the three, right? Like I know there's been renovations at LMS, but it's on paper, it works, right? But now we gotta see how it all kinda works. And sometimes paper doesn't always translate to reality, but it might.
Really important discussion. We spent an hour on it at this point. We're gonna call it there for tonight.
If you wanna by March, I needed the hour.
Yeah. Um, a lot of important work happening on the FIC. Stay tuned for more details over the next couple of months. We're gonna target March for, for a conclusion or some type of decision.
Again, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Alright, um, so back to you guys. Are you glad you stayed?
It was fun, yeah.
But you can feel free to peace out.
Definitely feel free to leave. Uh, we have already covered off on ManFest. We have school board comments this evening.
I just have one brief comment.
Yes.
Uh, Representative Peoples is here and we had a, I mean, he's on the facilities committee. He is very energized about the work he's doing in Concord. Particularly energized about the education aspect of it.
Just a second, please.
Well, we're gonna have public comment, but I just wanted to say, I wanted to publicly acknowledge.
It's eight o'clock anyways. Community input's next, so you're good.
Thank you. Um, I, I am energized by listening to this conversation tonight. You guys have talked about things tonight that I never thought I'd ever hear. Uh, I believe that we can get you the information that you need by March. This team has been working great together. Up in Concord, Vince Warren in, we're working towards uh, our committee assignments. I, my number one assignment was education. And I'm happy to tell you that the House has taken some action already and they have opened a second committee on education. Its sole purpose is to deal with school funding. The, a standing committee that's existing right now is gonna be dealing with school policy. So I know that there's a, a real burning desire to put the school funding debate to bed. For ever. Let's hope forever. But anyway, I don't know if I've been assigned to the education committee. I know I was being considered, but I don't know if I've been assigned, so I don't know what my committee assignments are yet. But I just thought I would bring you that news because is that school funding, um, if, depending on what comes out of the committee and what gets legislated, could impact what you do up the road here a little bit with, um, the new school. That's it. I just wanted to stop in and say hi and want to support everybody tonight on the school facilities committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hope you get all your new up there in Concord and, uh, keep it up. Well, tomorrow is our, uh, first training on sensitivity. So we, we have a house trainings, uh, being put on by Braver Angels on how to talk to the other party.
Good luck with that one.
Alright, have a good night. So I know we rolled, uh, in school board comments, community input. Uh, any other comments? Alright, we'll definitely shift gears into community input.
Oh, sorry, jumped ahead.
Yeah, yeah, please, come on up. Just name an address.
Daniel DeWitt, uh, to Glenwood Drive. The only comment that I would have is the proposed warrant article eleven that is not there. Um, looking at the numbers, I would, my recommendation would be instead of a hundred and twenty-five, you make that a hundred and thirty-five. That puts it exactly in line with the onsite insight recommendation of creating a capital improvement fund of all three schools. So knowing it's the last on the list, it's, if, if there's stuff, but it just, it now lines up with the actual report, so now it's not gonna look like, well, why didn't we follow the suggestion of the experts type thing?
Thank you for that.
Good idea.
Beyond that, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, any other community input this evening? Alright, we'll close community input, uh, and that will close our public session for this evening. Uh, we are moving into non-public this evening under RSA ninety-one AC, although we do have, uh, a couple of items to discuss in non-public. I will entertain a motion to move into non-public.
I moved.
Motion by Mr. Shoemaker.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sains.
Hi.
All is a favor.
Nice job last night.
Saying aye.
Aye.
Hi.
I'll see you tomorrow.
Opposed?
Okay.
Saint? That carries five zero, uh, we are now moving into non-public. Thank you very much, have a great evening and happy holidays to all. Thank you very much.